Good afternoon. This is our regular Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, January 23. We will start off with John. Any additions or deletions for today's agenda?
George, you have one proposed addition. It is to add an executive session for the purpose of discussing the salt and stall property acquisition.
Okay. Do you want me to, at the time, call appropriate CRS?
Yeah, we'll come up with the appropriate CRS's at that time. But just wanted to let the board know that we'd like to add that on, and that would be at the end of today's agenda.
Okay. Next is public comment. Anybody wishing to make a public comment on any items not on today's agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments?
None.
Well, I guess I'll make a comment.
Okay.
I, like many of you, probably saw part or all of President Obama's inaugural speech the other night, and I found that speech very full of hope, aspirations, and vision. And it was interesting because he emphasized throughout that speech several times the words "we" and collective action. And I thought that was really appropriate, given the divisiveness that we've seen in Washington in these last four years, the ability for Congress to try to find some common ground and work together on some very important issues that President Obama briefly outlined in his talk. And these are tough issues, and they're going to require the Congress to really try to work together and find common ground, issues such as gun reform, and immigration, education, addressing our infrastructure, and last but not least, climate change. And I think it's important that, you know, a lot of these issues get framed and lobbied aggressively by some of the most powerful lobby groups in DC that influence a lot of these decisions, whether it be the NRA or the oil and gas industry. And I would hope that, as they go into the new congressional session, that common sense and the understanding of common good will prevail through those discussions. We have voiced our concerns over some of these issues in letters and through meetings and discussions through our state and congressional delegates. And actually, that was one of our goals that came out of our retreat last year in terms of coming up with a format to be more, what's the word I'm on, the ability to do more outreach. And I think we will continue to do that as we move forward. These are important issues that not only affect our economic and environmental sustainability for our county, but also for our state and our country.
George?
Yes.
You reminded me that I should perhaps wish all the athletes at the X-Games a very safe and wonderful experience, that each and every one of them does their personal best, and that we have a safe event, and that the public participates in making that a safe event, too.
Yeah, we'll have an update on the X-Games shortly. Okay. With that, we're going to our consent action items, and we'll need, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 8, 2013 work session, the August 21, 2012 special meeting. That one probably got hidden back there, Lindy. Glad we caught that. January 8, 2013 special meeting, and the regular meetings of December 19, 2012, and January 9, 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, under our consent action items, this is a first reading set for a public hearing on February 13. This is a resolution providing supplemental appropriations to the 2012 budget running from September through December. We had a work session on this previously. And I know we have our finance department is all out sick with the flu. John is here, able to answer any questions we might have right now.
Well, any questions might be too optimistic, but, you know, just for the public, the resolution, and Steve, for your benefit, what we do is we bring budget increase items forward over the course of the year to get the board's approval. And then we move all of the items that are approved by the board into a resolution. And we do those on a quarterly basis. So this is wrapping up for the last quarter. So all of these items have been reviewed by the board previously and approved by the board previously. In essence, the resolution increases the revenues across all funds by $798,000, $798,99,000, and increases expenditures by $1,745,000. There is a net change in overall fund balance, then, of a decrease of $303,000 of our original budgetary plan. Again, all of these were anticipated when we adopted our 2013 budget moving forward, and this is just formalizing the previous approvals that the board's given on items. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions from...
Again, this is first reading, so if John can't answer any of those specific questions, we can park that and have staff come back.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners providing supplemental appropriations for the 2012 budget, September through December.
Second. Further discussion, Rachel?
Yeah, and we can answer this at the next reading as well, but do you know, does this really fully close out 2012 supplementals, or we might find a stray or two coming forward later?
This should close out our 2012 supplementals. I do believe we will still have some carryforwards to re-budget for 2013 still, so you should still expect to see those.
Okay. Thank you.
George? Yes, Steve?
I just want to comment that if there are any errors in this, it would fall on Jack's watch to that he made a mistake, which I seriously doubt that Jack let anything slip through the cracks on this. I feel good at approving something that Jack has previously approved.
You may want to watch yourself on that one.
I didn't like it so far.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Next is a consent public hearing. This is our second reading. This is an ordinance prohibiting the consumption of alcohol on unlicensed public premises for the duration of the 2013 X-Games. And Tom Grady's here with the Sheriff's Department. If you have any questions, or John Ely?
John, could you outline exactly what this is?
This is an annual event, more or less, of the prohibition of alcoholic consumption in public areas that are not otherwise licensed through the county for consumption of alcoholic beverages during the pendency of the X-Games. And the reason we do it every year is to give everybody a little bit of a reminder that this is the way the X-Games are run. It's the way the coordinators expect it to be run, is the way the public has grown to expect the X-Games to be conducted, and it's the way the law enforcement personnel monitor the X-Games. So with this ordinance, there will be a prohibition of open consumption or the possession of opened containers of alcoholic beverages during the X-Games on all public property within Picken County that is not otherwise licensed. And particularly, this pertains to all property associated with RRAFTa, all highways, roads, and streets within the county, assembling in the bus stops and RRAFTa platforms, as well as at the venue itself at Barnum Mountain.
Thank you.
Ron? I'm also just curious if there are any prohibitions that are year-round regarding consumption of alcohol. Open space in trails, is that, I mean, that's public to some extent, and can you have an open container the rest of the year on...
In the rest of the year, there is no countywide prohibition for open containers or consumption of alcohol, much like there is in, say, the incorporated municipalities within Picken County. As far as county-owned open space, you know, I don't know particularly, I don't recall of any management plan addressing alcoholic consumption, to be honest with you, but I certainly could be wrong in that.
And then, to follow up that question, and maybe for Grady, what are the laws against public intoxication? Is there, are you violating the law if you're publicly intoxicated on private, on public property throughout the rest of the year?
Not legally, but only if you're a hazard to yourself or others. If you're out of control, it becomes a medical issue. A lot of variables go with public intoxication.
Just curious about understanding the law.
So the X-Games are coming up this weekend, so we encourage everyone to go out and enjoy them, ride RRAFTa, but alcohol is not going to be tolerated. Steve?
Sheriff DeSalvo, this morning at the leadership team meeting, talked about how much nicer the atmosphere is since this ban on alcoholic consumption was put into effect, that it just goes so much more smoothly with a whole lot fewer problems for the Sheriff's Department since this, we started doing this.
Good. There are no more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. An ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners, Picken County, Colorado prohibiting the consumption of alcohol on public premises for the duration of the X-Game, on unlicensed public premises for the duration of the 2013 X-Games.
Second. Do you get that, Lindy? Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Thank you. Next is a confirmatory reading and public hearing. This is, oh yeah, this is an emergency resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for participation in the Emergency Fire Fund with the Colorado Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire Prevention and Control. Again, Tom Grady's the lead on this. So Tom, why don't you come on up and do this?
Tom Grady, Picken County Emergency Manager, representing Sheriff DeSalvo.
You wanted to explain what this entails?
Oh, sure. I'll just read the background on it. Board of County Commissioners approved this resolution as an emergency on January 9, 2013. It is before you at this time as a confirmatory reading and public hearing. The Emergency Fire Fund is a program which helps counties pay for financial obligations of private property wildfire suppression costs. The fund's established by Colorado Revised Statute 2433.51220. It's funded by contributions by counties as well as supplemental additions by the governor should the fund be depleted. The fund is accessed when the sheriff delegates the management of a wildland fire to the State of Division of Fire Prevention and Control because the fire has or will exceed the capabilities of Picken County to manage it.
Questions for Grady?
Yeah, I will just make the comment I made when we saw this the first time, and I can't remember if you were here or not.
Yes.
Okay. With that, we should just kind of keep an eye out on the budgetary impacts of if there's going to be requests for counties to double or triple their contribution. That seems to be an ongoing dialogue.
I was advised it came down this year. We went from $53,000 to $43,000. It was $53,000, I believe, in 2012, and this year it's $43,000. So it might be...
That's surprising.
Is that the captain, or there's more participating counties? I don't know the reason for it.
Okay. Well, let's just keep an eye on it in future years. It may be that the state's budget has improved so much that they're not trying to look to counties for additional funds right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions or comments? Steve?
This past summer, there was a major wildfire near Last Chance, Colorado, and I think it was entirely on private land. So is that the, is that the kind of fire that this ordinance would...
Yes.
Would help pay for the fighting that?
Yeah. There's all kinds of funds that exist going across between state, federal, private, and unincorporated counties. So there's all sorts of financial resources that exist, but this was primarily for the state to assist us in private land fires in unincorporated Picken County.
Okay.
We had two wildfires yesterday in the state of Colorado, which is very bizarre for January.
Yeah, maybe noted. I heard on the radio this morning that right now, we're at 80% of our snowpack, no, we're at 57% of our snowpack for the year, which is only 80% where we were last year at the time of the drought. So we're definitely going into a second year of drought here.
Exactly. It's going to be a big concern for us.
Yes.
Very big.
Even in the snowpack that's out there, because it's been so cold, has very low moisture content on top of that.
70 degrees in Denver today, and high winds. That's predictions, anyway. Just for a note, though, we anticipate starting our wildfire public outreach in March. Usually, we go a little longer, but because of the drought, and it takes so long to get it fired up, that we're probably going to start very early this year.
Very good. Public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I would make a motion to approve the emergency resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for participation in the Emergency Fire Fund with the Colorado Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire Prevention and Control.
Second.
I've had the second first. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Thank you. Thanks, Grady.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next, we have our land use consent public hearings. The first is the PT Ranch Barn LLC slash 1892 Castle Creek LLC slash PT Ranch House. LLC's activity envelope and site plan review for river restoration. This is to be continued to February 27.
I'll make a motion to continue to February 22nd, 27th.
Second. This is a public hearing, anybody wishing to comment on this at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and then bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. The next for the land use consent public hearing is the Nagawa, Nakawawa Annual Review. That again is to be continued to 2000, to February 13.
I'll make a motion to continue to February 13.
Second. Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further board discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye. Thank you. Okay. Next is our land use public hearing with the Barso subdivision. We're way ahead of schedule.
I just sent Mitch a text. They knew to come about 12:15, so hopefully Mitch and Scott will walk in the door. I do need to set up for a second, so that'll kill a minute.
Okay. Grassroots, let's just take a five-minute break while we're setting up. We're on to our land use public hearings. We are looking at the Barta Parcel Subdivision slash PUD detailed submission and final plat, Royford Meadows Major Plat Amendment, and Activity Envelope slash Site Plan Review for Common Parcel II. This is our second reading, and Suzanne Wolf will be presenting on it.
Okay. I figured since Steve missed first reading, and he also missed the prior rounds of conceptual submission, I'd give a brief summary of what's gone before and just orient you, so...
Suzanne, just to let you know, I'm pretty familiar with the Barta parcel.
Okay, great. I'll just, then I'll just...
I've actually picked potatoes on there when I was young.
You're familiar with it on the ground. Okay. So you know the location. So just to orient, the Barta parcel in the midst of the surroundings, here's the remaining 10 acres of the Barta parcel. The properties around this is now the Royford Meadows subdivision, five lots for single-family residences, and two common parcels, one here at the entry, and then one down here by the river. There was also a small piece that was conveyed to the county as sort of a trailhead area next to the pedestrian bridge that's right there across the highway. So the, this is detailed submission and final plat. The general idea here was that the Barta parcel would be subdivided into two lots. Those two lots would become lots six and seven of the Royford Meadows subdivision. So basically, this piece that I guess was once an entire, an intact piece would become all part of the same subdivision now, and be subject to the same rules and regulations. So there would be now seven lots within the subdivision and the two common parcels. So that's the very short version of the background and prior approvals. Happy to provide more if it would be helpful. At first reading, there were just a couple of issues, I think, issues to further discuss, one being the vested rights. The applicant had requested a 10-year vested right, and through your discussion at the last meeting, the board agreed to grant a five-year vested right to all of the lots in the amended subdivision PUD, including lots six and seven, which would run from the date of this approval. So assuming approval is granted today, the five years would run from this date, and all of those lots would be subject to site plan review. Again, a little bit of background on that discussion last time. Currently, the remaining lots, only one lot has been developed. The remaining lots are not subject to site plan review under their current vested right until, sorry, was it 2015? October of 2015. The applicant had hoped to obtain a longer vested right for all of these together, and that's, the board has, again, through discussion, agreed that there would be five years, but all of the lots would be subject to site plan starting today for the date of the approval. So that's what was incorporated, what I've incorporated into the language of the resolution. Excuse me, of the resolution. Other item, well, just in terms of changes in the resolution, the prohibition of commercial agricultural activities, we discussed briefly last time. John Ely did recommend, there had been language in the prior approvals to that effect. The question was, should they be subject to our new requirement of recordation of a covenant? John said that that would be the more appropriate way to go, so that has been included in the conditions. So the covenant would apply, then, to all seven lots under the subdivision, rather than differentiating between the old lots and the new lots. And the last item was, looking for a little more detail on the site plan for Common Parcel II down here, and actually, I'm going to switch to, I could have put this on here, too, but, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit on that. So if you, I'll go out a little bit. If you recall, this was the original envelope for the recreational facility on Common Parcel II. Through the discussion at conceptual submission, you all agreed that the applicant could explore an alternative site that would be less visible from the Rio Grande, or the Rio Grande Trail, which is running right here, as well as to the neighbors, and provide a better location for the applicant for that facility.
I'm sorry, can you orient me on this map? Where's the river?
The river is down below here.
Okay.
Actually, let me put, I'll put the bigger version on, and then we'll go to the detail.
Okay.
So the river's down here. So essentially, this bench, so the trail is up above here. This was that bench right next to the trail, and then we walked down this road, down to this lower area, down by the river. So this little bench in here is the area where they're now proposing the envelope and the location of the recreational facility. Does that help? Okay. So then we'll, we can go in a little bit closer on this one. And just to, there's been a slight, as they looked at the actual grading and improvements to the road coming down there, they actually tweaked the sighting of the cabin slightly to work better with the grades and to create less sight disturbance, essentially, when they put this cabin in there. So the existing road comes right up to it, and if you saw on that last map, there's, you know, there's basically a, you know, a, not unimproved, but a limited two-track kind of a road that loops around through that lower part of the property. This is access directly off of that. You can see they've put in a couple of parking spaces and some limited landscaping around that. But essentially, this location is really not visible from the trail. There's quite a drop. As you come down, you can see the topography above it. It's down below there, so you wouldn't see it from the trail. Really, the only place you might see it from is if you were in the river, if you were looking for it, I guess. So anyway, we had just asked for a little bit more detail on the grading and any landscaping associated with this, so I think that satisfies our request. The applicant is anticipating in this other envelope, they've left it as essentially a landscaping envelope, and this area through here around it is where, basically, the edge of that slope, there's some areas where it could use some improvement, and I think essentially, you know, they haven't looked in detail at what they want to do there, but it would only be landscaping, and we would look further at that when they came in for any, that development. So, so anyway, I think at this point, the site plan satisfies our request for some additional information, and I think that's it. We're recommending approval, subject to the conditions as revised, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Rachel?
You know, Suzanne, I just don't recall discussion of parking places next to the recreational cabin. I had gotten the impression it was very close to the homes, and it'd be a walk, too, and enjoy it, and you said they've added a couple of parking spaces. I just don't recall that being part of our discussion.
I don't think we've discussed parking at all in the past. I mean, it is, there is a road to it.
Yeah, I remember the dirt.
So, yeah, I mean, so it is and will remain a road. You know, that was not part of, it was not something that was prohibited when we discussed all of the specific limitations on the cabin. So I guess that's something you could, you could discuss, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly see, you know, drop-off and pickup and, you know, for heavier materials and things like that, but, you know, we were trying to make the cabin as unintrusive as possible, but, you know, I can imagine some very big cars down there, and then you start saying, well, what are these cars doing so close to the river? You know, and almost them being more visible than the cabin itself, which has been well-designed and I think is very discreet. So, you know, I would just throw that out to the rest of the board members, is that, you know, as we thought about moving it to a less visible location, a less impactive on the neighbors, I was hopeful we wouldn't have a greater impact on the, you know, the river corridor itself and the aesthetics down there.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my only thought is that it might, I mean, to having parking spaces, it may be more appropriate to have, I mean, again, I don't think they're looking at highly developed, but to have a parking area there, so if people do drive, they know where to park, as opposed to, right now, I mean, that road does loop through. There's nothing that prohibits them from using that road with any vehicle at this point in time. So, you know, maybe that is a part of, if we designate parking spaces, that, you know, maybe that needs to be incorporated, is that we're, if vehicles are going to come down here, this is where they go, at least it is on a bench that is farther away from the river, and try and discourage people from, you know, driving down onto the bench, which is right next to the river. Because the road does continue on through there.
And I know there's a lot of detail about screening, again, related to the recreational cabin, but I didn't see any references to screening of the parking area, and, you know, perhaps that's appropriate, you know, to designate and screen those areas.
Yeah, I mean, the parking... Yeah, I mean, the parking, sorry, let me bring this back over here. The parking areas are directly adjacent to the cabin, and all of this is, you know, there are big cottonwood trees through there. I mean, obviously, that's, you know, a seasonal impact in terms of screening. I mean, could there be, I guess, maybe some additional landscaping on? You can see a couple, a little bit of landscaping here. Actually, the road, you know, I think the road, I mean, maybe these guys can help in terms of the road. Is there any area on the other side of the road to...
We probably could. There is, as Suzanne said, cottonwoods, very mature.
Well, we did the site visit, so I'm familiar.
Yeah, so it is well-screened naturally, but there is some room. We won't have water down there as far as irrigation goes, but we could, certainly, if you request screening, we could add it. I mean, I will say, from living just upriver from here for, since 1987, one thing that I didn't like was the loop. The only place to park if you wanted to fly fish was really down by the river.
Right.
In that road. This, as Suzanne said, it should actually keep cars away from the river. So I think the parking spaces, personally, are logical and a bonus because they will encourage people to not drive right down to the river. But I'm happy to discuss adding some screening.
And for the record, you are?
Scott Russell, sorry. Owner's representative.
If it's okay to continue, how many parking places are you talking about?
Just two.
Two.
And, you know, the road is not suited for all sorts of vehicles. I mean, we're talking ATVs, we're talking, they have a Ranger, which is just a six-wheel kinda, you know, not even a car, maybe Jeeps. That's what we're thinking, and that's, you know, rainy day, I mean, some people might walk down there.
Yeah.
Encourage it.
Would you support the prohibition of parking along the road, along the river bottom? I mean, you know, I just am concerned someone's gonna say, okay, we're having the 60th year birthday anniversary or whatever, and you'll use the cabin, it's outdoor picnic, it'll be a wonderful location, but you'll end up with, you know, X many 20 cars all along the Lower River Loop parking there. I mean, it just, and I don't think that was our intention in bringing the cabin down there, was to start bringing vehicular traffic down by the river.
I don't know how to respond to that because without the cabin, cars can go down there.
Right. But would they go down there for a party if there's no cabin there?
Yeah, well, they do.
They do.
That's how you fish.
Yeah.
You just don't have the shelter, the protection that's away from the river. I mean, if you recall over the years, I mean, there was a TV down there, can't say it was legal, but it wasn't ours. There's a fire pit, so there is reason to go down there even without a cabin.
Okay.
Without a doubt, because that is the access to the river for the H.O.A.
So Rachel poses this question, I guess, open up to other board members for comments on Rachel's concerns or comments.
Just to clarify, is the cabin for use of the owners of the homes on the property and for their guests?
Yes.
It wouldn't be a public facility?
No, there is a public trail access that's a little downstream off of the bike path to get down to the river through the property. This, though, would be probably, I can't speak for the owner, but probably owned by the association and for use by the homeowners and their guests.
Okay.
And it's, it's not a, you can't spend the night down there, there's not a full kitchen, there's a green restroom. There's no septic, there's no sewer, and so it's meant to be more of a shelter and a place to store fly fishing equipment.
Okay.
Other thoughts or comments?
The public access is upstream, isn't it, or?
Upstream.
Yeah, it's not downstream, it's upstream.
I'm sorry.
Just making sure, it's on the upstream side of the property.
It is.
Which is access off of the trail.
Yes.
I actually think the parking spaces, if designed properly, would add to hiding the cars then, then, you know, having a designated spot as opposed to cars pulling off into the...
The road.
Off the road to get out of the way in all sorts of random places, and do more damage to the terrain and that sort of stuff that way.
Well, I have kind of one more follow-up question for Susan. Suzanne, if I may. The riparian protection codes that we have would prevent manipulation of the vegetation with, you know, this cannot be manicured and made into a lawn type of area, things like that, just native vegetation riparian zone?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Do we have any prohibition in here, or do we need it to say that this shall not be available for, quote, "public events such as fundraisers"? That it can't be a, you know, dinner by the river, raise money? I mean, certainly a private party, private birthday, private separate, but not something in which tickets are sold to or it's a public event?
We do not have any language to that effect in there at this point.
You know, it seems like that would be appropriate to me, to at least try to limit it from, you know, we've had the experience, I think, with other barns in other parts of the county, which kind of very regularly became wedding reception zones or things like that, and I think we should make sure we're covering our bases there.
Rob?
And a question regarding that. So they would have to go through a special event permitting process, and what, how could we protect ourselves potentially through that process as opposed to through this PUD?
I mean, the process basically addresses, you know, what are the impacts? Where are you gonna park people? How are you gonna use this? Not so much, you know, it's more about making it work as opposed to, you know, allowing you to do it or not. I mean, obviously, the impacts, they said we're gonna park people all over the lower bench by the river, we would deny the request, but short of that, somehow using the facility and parking people elsewhere on the ranch, I mean, we would consider it as we would any other event. So I think if you wanted to say, we don't even wanna, you know, and, you know, we don't want to hear these requests, we don't want you to be submitting special, you know, event applications, that would be...
And if I could clarify, you know, if someone who's an owner in the property wanted to let their cousin have their wedding reception there, and it's for free, that's one thing. But I don't want it to become, again, a for-lease type of venue that is a paid-to-use...
Right.
Public, you know, so the special event permit would still apply if they're having a gathering of 150, that is, you know, one of the owner's sons.
As long as it's a...
And they could do that as a private event.
It's a private event, it doesn't...
But if it's starting to be marketed, you know, and again, not that it's your intent, Scott, we just have to make the code for 20 years from now, that it's not intended to be a rental facility.
Well, going back to Rob's comment, I mean, would the association documents be a more appropriate place to restrict use down there than the PUD itself? I mean, I don't think we have a problem with what you're requesting, because there is no intent.
Yeah.
Twenty-four by 24 cabin without a kitchen.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not a commercial. The association documents, we, we're not involved in those documents, are we?
No, and they can be changed by the association.
Association, so...
With the exception of the relation of the association documents to an aspect of the county approval.
Right.
In other words, association documents more, most of the time will incorporate the conditions of the development approvals, such that activities by one subsequent owner of the subdivided parcel won't affect the approval and therefore impact somebody else within the subdivision. And then those specifically can't be amended without acquiescence of the county simply because it relates to the development approval that was granted.
But it seems like it'd be simpler or cleaner just to have it right in the PUD approvals.
The subdivision documents, you know, survive, the PUD development guide survives, it can be reflected one way or the other, it's just, it's actually clear to have it on multiple documents, whatever the document structure is for the development, which is typically left to the, to the developer, to instruct their own development guide or association covenants, or however they want to set up their development.
I think the pet control, there's some other items, fencing, that you have, you know, that we put in the land use approvals that do trickle into the association documents, so this wouldn't be the only item that does this.
I don't think it's an issue for us to have the type of restriction you're discussing. It's, like I said, it's the 24 by 24 cabin, you know, it's the size of a two-car garage.
It's just for clarity for future boards and...
Yeah. There's only two parking spaces, but, yeah, commercial events, I would say, not an issue.
So what I'm hearing is, we could put it in multiple documents, designating two parking spaces only, restricting the use of the cabin for owners, guests, but not for lease or for fundraising, commercial purposes. Rob?
Yeah, I would just, given our conversation, which is gonna happen later today, that make sure that everybody's aware of what "commercial event" means. A photographer using it to sell the property, taking a picture down there is a commercial event if they have two cars. So just be clear as to what a commercial event is in terms of the land use code that's in our meeting later today.
Yeah.
And what we're defining as a commercial event.
You know, perhaps more along the lines of, like, it shall not be available for rent or for lease for fundraisers, gatherings, or other events, you know, just, and not even have to use the word "commercial event", but it's just not available for lease or, you know, for, to profit.
Is there some language in the master plan for music festival on Casle Creek that the BARDA created?
Suzanne, if you can figure that out. Any other questions for Suzanne at this point? Turn it over to the applicants.
I think we're pretty easy. Introduce yourself for the record. Sorry, for the record, I'm Mitch Haas, Haas Land Planning, and Scott Russell is the owner's representative. I think, you know, we've read through everything, we don't have any issues with the recommended conditions. We are, after conferring with our client, we don't know the property, we're okay with the five-year vested and agreeing to site plan review on all of the lots, and I think as we've just discussed, also on the common parcels, as we still have that landscaping at the top that we don't know what we would do with. I think we're fine even saying we would do better job of landscaping and screening this two-car parking area. This was frankly a sort of first initial blush at a site, a landscaping plan, and was prepared by engineers, not landscape architects at this point. So we'd be happy to enhance the landscaping and screening, it's not a problem. So I don't, unless I'm missing something, we're, well, if there's any questions, we can answer them, but I don't have anything to present. Right. We're trying to come about this, you know, do this the right way and not fight about anything.
Any questions for the applicants? Seeing now this is a public hearing, if any wishing to comment on this item, seeing now we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Make a motion to approve the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Picken County, Colorado, granting approval of the BARDA parcel subdivision PUD detailed submission and final plat subdivision exemption for a major plat amendment to the Roaring Fork Meadows subdivision PUD activity envelope, site plan review for common parcel two, and vested rights with the added language somewhere that we discussed about...
Not for lease.
Not for lease for certain events. Second.
And we also have, unless it's in there, maybe I missed it, designated two parking places? Is that already in the resolution or...
It's not specified, but basically, this is the most recent version of the site plan, so that would be incorporated, I guess, if, I think maybe there was some, did you want to include a limitation to only two parking spaces, or, or just that, that's what's shown on the site plan, so if...
Well, that's what I was gathering from your comments, that, you know, limited to two cars for...
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'm, and to limit to two parking spaces to be designed in a way that they're sheltered in some fashion.
Did you mean screened?
Screened, screened. And I will note that in the resolution number 11, there is not a date written in, so I'm assuming that we're writing in a five-year vested period.
Right, the 2018 reflects five years, and then, right, we'll write in today's.
Today's date.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? So there's two parking spaces at the shelter. Is there a prohibition against parking on the road? So it's an... I don't know what you're talking about.
I wasn't sure that we could if it's an existing road. I, you know, I was concerned about that, Michael, but thank you for bringing that back up.
The road's only about 10 feet wide. If a car parks in it, then you can't use the road.
You probably have some public safety restrictions on that, wouldn't you?
Probably, well, right. I mean, it's barely even a road, so much as a...
It seems like the intent of this conversation is to limit the car and the traffic going up and down, and so for me, that would be designating two parking places and not allowing any parking along the road.
And that's why we've talked about parking places, that they offer a place to get off the road. So are we adding to the parking, or are we subtracting from the, I mean, you know, there's room for two cars down there safely, and that's the way it should be, it seems to me.
I just see this, I'm sorry.
You were first.
I just see this as a private amenity to seven home sites. I don't see this being like a public beach where 30 cars are gonna go down there. I know we want to protect ourselves against that to some level, but it's a small cabin. Already, they have the right to drive cars down there. It's away from the river, there is vegetation. I just don't see the need to over, to have something out.
But it's not so much for the public use, but there is potential with the homeowners there, the seven lots with guests, with, that you could basically discount why you even bother having designated parking areas then. You're just, you're discounting that. So you either, you either want to limit the cars down there in any way we can, but allow the ability to bring supplies down or if someone's disabled, or you don't want to, and it's, it's a private road, and they could do whatever they want. It doesn't seem like you have it both ways. Steve?
I don't, I think that would be over-regulating the issue to say they can't park cars along the road because it is private road on private land, and they've already said mostly it's four-wheelers and a Ranger ATV that go down there anyhow, and I think having them add the two parking places makes it easier, you know, a more designated parking place if somebody is down there with a car, but if there are a few more cars down there at some time, I don't have a problem with that.
There is, I mean, there is a potential impact to the neighbor. I mean, one of the reasons we suggested moving this cabin down to this spot where it was originally up, right adjacent to neighbor was to lessen the impact to the neighbors who really had objected to this whole process. And so, you know, if you have the ability, the potential to have cars going up and down that road, that's an impact to an adjoining neighbor. I mean, I'll just throw that out, as at least a reason why I think we should... You know, and again, just as we've worked through this process, it's sort of a give and take, and we're just trying to have the best possible end result of this, not only for this, for the applicants, but for the, for the neighbors as well.
Well, if I may say, I mean, I think some of this, the association, and I know the current owner, and I anticipate all the owners in the subdivision will want to enjoy that parcel, so I don't see cars being left down there for an extended period of time. I would imagine the association is gonna restrict a lot of what goes on down there because if I lived there, I wouldn't want to go down there to fish and see cars. So I do think some of this, as you mentioned, will control itself. As far as the neighbors, there were gonna be cars up there next to the fishing cabin right at their property line. I don't know that the impact, because it's down here, we don't have a parking regulation beyond limiting to two spaces, is going to impact the neighbor. I don't see that personally. I think the association will want to control any excessive traffic. It is not meant to be used for cars. It's meant to be enjoyed, as a quiet place to go down and fish and relax and read a book and do whatever. So that... So that, that's just me personally saying, I think the association will control what you're trying to control through the neighbors.
I understand and I appreciate that, but who knows how the association and owners come and go, and different values, what they bring with them, and we have no control over that.
Quickly, I just think it's, the instances that you might have more than two cars down there and people parking would be so sporadic and infrequent as to not really worth, be worthy of much attention, because, for instance, the street I live in, there's no parking signs up and down it. When the neighbor across the street throws their party once or twice a year, people park all over the street, it's once or twice a year, and then the cars are gone, and that's, that's it. You just, you live with it, the police don't even bother with it. You know, it's, it's, reminds me the kind of thing like way back when I worked in Fort Collins, and they would say, on the days of football games, we have so much traffic, and everybody's response in the city was always, we're not going to regulate the eight days a year when we have football games. It's just, you deal with it on those days. So, to me, it's, it's almost like a non-issue, it'll be so random and inconsistent, and no one's going to leave their cars there for extended periods of time. Somebody parks a car for a few hours and then they leave, I mean...
Thank you. Well, Rachel raised the issue with the cars, and Michael sort of threw in his other caveat, so...
Let me just ask you guys, to, because I remember going down to look at the riparian zone flagging. Does the road impinge in the riparian zone at some points?
The road does not, it has culvert, and that's where it crosses. And so the flagging that was done was post-culvert installation, and so that's not riparian. It's on either side of the road.
It's above the high water line, but within 100 feet of it.
Right, because it is lifted up, but on either side, I mean, that, that starts to be a bit of the issue, is just, you know, you'd like to think everyone's car is well-maintained and don't leak oil or radiator fluid or anything like that. Some, sometimes people are using those older vehicles for that four-wheel driving, and so, so it's really, to me, more about the protection of the river health in the riparian zone, you know, as much as the aesthetics of the river and the wildlife in the riparian zone. I, I, I'm struggling for language, I guess, is, is what I would say. I don't know if it, it needs to be an outright prohibition, or it could be, it is not the intent that extended parking or, you know, and then, then people go, well, what's extended mean, or overnight, you know, I would see it as a drop-off type of thing, and, you know, or for maintenance and, you know, of the property, but again, just the, that, creating the cabin then creates the ability to say, okay, let's have the, you know, Rotary Fish for Young Kids Day, and you have 10 cars stacked up across there, and does that start to really go counter to all the riparian protections we've been trying to put in place? So, I, I'm struggling for any language that might be sufficient, and without being over-regulatory.
Rob?
May I suggest some light language to say that the homeowners' association agrees to try to regulate that no more than five cars at any one time will be down there?
That starts to get really loud, that, I mean, that...
I mean, well...
Well, he threw it out as an idea.
I'm throwing it out there as an idea, that, you know, I mean, second thing I'm going to say is, you know, is the sheriff going to go check to see if cars are good down there once a month to see what's going on, or...
No, but the zoning enforcement officer might get calls from neighbors to say, you know, there's been repeated number of cars down in the riparian zone, is that what you guys intended? And, you know, depending on when people go fishing, people leave their cars idling for long periods of time, you know, stereos, you know, all sorts of things, it just can be detrimental to the wildlife and, and the river.
We're intentional in always putting two parking spaces, and not, not a strip of five or six or something, you know.
Michael, you brought up that question.
Well, I, I think the intent of two parking spaces speaks for itself, two cars should be down there, that's what it should be. They are, those are areas for cars. Any more than two cars, go home and walk back.
Perhaps, with language like, it is not the intent that the road shall be used for parking, you know, on a continuing basis, or something like that, and then it may be left to future interpretation, but I think that if someone leaves their car there every day for six hours, it would start to be a continuing basis, and if it's occasional, it would not be occasional. I mean, it would...
I'm okay with that language.
How about if it's not the intent for cars to park along the road, given the fact that there are designated two parking places to accommodate any needs?
I'm okay with that language.
Yeah.
We're there.
So, you started this motion, but we never had a second, so you...
I did second.
Oh, you did second. Do a friendly amendment.
I will amend the motion to reflect that language. I will accept that.
You got that, Suzanne?
I think so.
Okay, then, this is a public hearing, if any wish to comment on this. Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Any other questions, discussions? You've got a motion, you've got a second?
Just like to thank the applicants for working with us, appreciate the time you've put into this.
First, thank you, that was a process.
So, given that, I'll call a question, all the papers, say aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
You want your book back? I don't think I left any nasty notes. Always got to double-check that. What the hell is this?
Exclamation.
Put it in the attic in one of those houses, and he'll find it 100 years from now.
Historic document.
Paper.
They have that stuff on paper. Okay, we're going to continue our meeting here. Next on, the agenda is land use action item, the first agenda item under that is the John C Bishop Family Trust Amendment to a Development Permit. Lance Clark is getting ready for us here, and he'll be the staff, please. Oh, you know, I want to make one note on this last part.
So you'll have to...
Before we get going. Lance, as long as you're here, can we pass on this information to the P&amp;Z, because they had some concerns or questions in terms of divesting, right? It'd be good for them to, again...
Know what we end up doing?
Let them understand, well, how and why we made these decisions, so hopefully it'll help in their future decisions as well.
As a general rule, at the start of every P&amp;Z meeting, the first thing I do is tell the P&amp;Z what board action was taken on any items that they know the recommendation, and of course, they're very, very interested in.
And then explain why.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Are you going to stand back here behind me?
If I could for a second, is that all right?
That's fine.
Just to kick this off, if I may, this is the Bishop Family Trust Minor Amendment to Development Permit, and this is, sitting there is John Bishop, and of course Alan Richmond, and John Richmond from, I mean, John Bishop from Sandy, Utah. Some of you are familiar with this property, because this has been a 20-year process, actually, of where we are today. The first application made on this property was a growth management application in 1993, and we're now 2013. And ugly Rachel and Michael and maybe George have seen some of this before, but let me tell you what this property is. This Aspen down here, Castle Creek Road going up valley, this is the Music Associates of Aspen Property, this is the music school, and the Bishop property, known as Bonanza Plaza V, was originally a 38-acre parcel, which was created through the state 35-acre subdivision exemption. So it was determined to be a legal 35-acre plus lot, but back in 1993, it was determined that it did not have a development right because of the time of its creation. So, in 1993, an application was made through our growth management quota system process to try to obtain a development right, and at that time, the access to this only, this Hall 38-acre property, the only really buildable, flat, non-hazardous site is clear up at this end, and the only access available at the time was an easement through the music school and wandering all across this very dangerous hillside that was impacted by avalanche potential. So the, in 1993, that first growth management application, it did not meet threshold. The applicant came back in 1998, after we had established the ability to create development rights in the real area with TDRs, and asked for special review use for use of a TDR to create a development right. Board of County Commissioners denied that for essentially the same reason, this access. There was another potential access, always has been, through the Hall property, Marshall Hall and his family, who live right here, but the applicant was never able to secure an easement through that Hall property, and only had the ability to go through the music school, which was very problematic. So after the second denial in 1998, the applicant initiated legal action against the county that we were denying the ability to have development, and the result of that legal action, and if you have any specific questions, all I remember is doing a deposition, but the specifics, John Ely can bring you up to date on that, but as a result of that, the direction to the applicant was to submit a new growth management quota system application, which they did in 2002. And at that point, things were working, starting to work with Hall in terms of getting an easement, but it still wasn't secured. So in 1992, again, the growth management quota system application did not meet threshold, and therefore it was denied, and the applicant came to the Board of County Commissioners saying that that denial constituted a taking at that point, having tried three times to, to get the development right. And the Board of County Commissioners in 2003 did find that to deny development on the property would be a taking, and in 2003, a taking remediation resolution was crafted by myself and the attorney's office and the Board of County Commissioners that would allow development. And at that time, it had two different criteria, whether, based on whether or not this long access through the music school was to be utilized, or whether an access through Hall could be utilized, and there were two different sets of conditions. The upshot of that is that since that time, access through the Hall property has been secured, there is an easement, and the driveway has actually been constructed to the proposed building envelope. And furthermore, this, which was originally part of the 38, 38-acre Bonanza Plaza parcel, has been transferred to the Music Associates of Aspen. So the remainder Bishop parcel is 22 acres. The Music Association of Aspen was very desirous of obtaining this, both to ensure that there would never be access through their property, but in addition, because it includes Kino Gulch, and the music school needed to have that in their ownership in order to do the required mitigation in Kino Gulch that we have required prior to the redevelopment of the music school. So, that resolution of approval of takings was done in 2003, and since it was a takings and not a specific land development approval, it was determined that it did not benefit from statutory vested rights. So the condition of approval in 2003 said, didn't say this approval has vested rights for three years as a normal approval would, it said that the conditions in this approval can be relied upon for three years. And Mr. Bishop went away, worked with the music school on transferring the property, worked with the Halls to get an easement, got the driveway built, but still has not been able to develop the property, and so came back to the Board of County Commissioners in 2008 and asked for an extension on that 2003 resolution, that would say the conditions of approval are good for, can be relied upon for three more years, and that was till 2011. Now we come to 2013, property still has not been able to be developed, and the applicant is here asking that, once again, Board of County Commissioners consider an extension to that original resolution to say that those conditions can be relied upon for three more years. Also, this time, in addition to asking for a three-year continuation of those conditions, they're asking for a very slight modification to the building envelope. When that building envelope was originally set, the topographic information was done from aerial photography, not on-site, and now that they're closer to development and have the driveway in place, they did actual on-site topographic survey work and have found a slightly more area that is on slopes of less than 30%, and they're asking that that be included in the building envelope, and we have no objection to that. It's still a relatively small building envelope, just a little bit over a half an acre, because the, the bench up there is, is relatively small. In 2008, when the extension was given, we added some specific conditions to make certain that we would not end up with something that would not be acceptable. Specifically, we set a limit on the house size. The original 2003 approval said that they could build 57-50 with the use of one TDR, not automatically, they had to surrender a TDR to build 57-50, and that if the Hall access were secured, they could come in through growth management or through special review for TDRs to increase that house size. In 2008, that was limited to a maximum of 8,250 square feet, meaning that there would be the ability to build 57-50 with one TDR, or to build 82-50 with two TDRs. So the limit was set on the house size, and also in 2008, the condition was added regarding impact fees, which we've added, and that, the most important thing, development on the home site must meet all applicable terms and provisions of the land use code regarding site plan and scenic review and the effect at the time of building permit submittal. So essentially, though we said the conditions of approval can be relied on for three years, any development's going to be subject to anything that's in the land use code when they come in for the building permit. And they are willing to live with that again, and are asking that we essentially approve that 2008 approval, which approved the 2003 approval, for another three years from today. What that means is, anything that happens in the code, in our Chapter VII standards regarding constraints or scenic or site plan, they'd be subject to. I think what that means that would be relied upon would be the 57-50 and the 82-50 with one additional TDR. Staff does recommend approval of the request. If you have any questions for me or the applicant, we can do that.
Let me start, just to help clarify, because I don't, I do know all the history of it, or at least I forgot all the history. So this is no longer considered a takings at this point?
It's, it's, it's working under a taking remediation?
It still is working under a taking, okay. And then, in your memo, you say that the proposed amendment would add approximately 2,851 square feet to the envelope. So that, that additional square footage would, is included within the total build-out of 82-50 if they desire?
That's just the, that's just the...
Oh, that's just the building envelope.
Land area.
Land area that they can build on, they're asking to increase that...
Okay.
...by 2,000 feet.
Okay, I got it. Okay, great, thanks. Other questions? Rachel?
Really more of a comment than a question, but on the resolution, I...
Really more of a comment than a question, but on the resolution, I think that it would be valuable to add an item number six and just reiterate those square footages and TDR requirements, as you mentioned Lance. That way, someone doesn't have to keep flipping back through so many resolutions and would be aware of the second TDR requirement.
Can I make a comment?
Not yet. Other questions for Lance? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to the applicant. And you want to introduce yourself, please?
Sure. For the record, I'm Alan Richmond. I'm here representing John Bishop. This is John Bishop. He's the county owner. He's been working with the county on this for many years. We've read the staff report and listened to Lance's presentation. We're very comfortable with the staff's approach to this. We really don't have any requests to amend the conditions that the staff has proposed. I was going to take you through some of the history, but Lance has done a more thorough job with that history than I have. I've really just come onto this project in the last year. Lance has been living with it for many, many years. But I think this request is rather simple. It's an effort on John's part to hopefully live within the approval that was granted a number of years ago. We're not asking to change any of the conditions of that approval. As Lance mentioned, the last thing that really happened on this property back around the time of the last approval was that the driveway was constructed through the Hall property, which really eliminated many, many of the issues that this property was facing. And that occurred and the extension occurred in 2008. And we all kind of know what happened between 2008 and 2011, when this three-year period of reliance was in effect. Our real estate market was kind of in the tank. John now has a contract purchaser on the property and is trying to be able to deliver this property to that purchaser with the conditions that you all worked out many years ago. This is not an effort on our part to really change any of those negotiations. We're very comfortable with all of that. The only change that we're really requesting here is the minor amendment to the square footage of the building envelope. I think you all have the packet that we submitted, and the very last page of the packet has the building envelope exhibit and shows the minor areas that we're talking about adding to and subtracting from the envelope. We're actually subtracting some area because we found a portion of the envelope when we actually had the on-site topography. A portion of it was below the top of the bank, and that was not the way the conditions were written. The conditions basically require the envelope to go from the top of the bank on Castle Creek on one side to the very base of the hillside of the mountain on the other side. And the red line on that drawing now is drawn specifically to those conditions. So we're not really introducing any new elements here. We're just trying to comply with what everybody thought we were doing in terms of the envelope before. Our staff recommendations are appropriate, and we would hope you would support them. John, do you have any clarifications you'd like to add?
The only thing I wanted to add is that the increase in the envelope size goes back towards the upper bluff. And it's just, it's a minor increase, but it's important because we have agreements that, of course, we've dealt with the Halls for years, and they're great people. And as are my neighbors down below, Jimmy Smith and Judy Hyde, have been wonderful neighbors. They, we have an agreement with them that really actually helps site review in the future, that we will not use that 30 feet close to the edge of the hill. So if you go up to the property and take a look at it, you'll see that it's been staked back. There's a 30-foot setback, not only for wildfire, which you all have recommended, and which, so we can't build up to that 30-foot mark. But we have an agreement with the neighbors that also we hold sacred. So that property became real thin. As we looked at it, we cut back 30 feet. We needed an extra 10 or 15 towards the hill to make it work to put a house on. So that's why we're asking for the extra feet, so that we can really, you know, the house will sit back in a bit. And that's, it's important to just recognize the reason why we're trying to add just so, such a small amount of square footage. It becomes important in the future just to build a house, so.
So in other words, there are private covenants that actually restrict beyond your restrictions that make this an extremely tight envelope to work with.
Rachel?
So, this is kind of for you, Alan, and also maybe Lance, kind of mixed in between. Because we have in this depiction, a building envelope, and often I'm used to seeing both a activity envelope and a building envelope. Is this kind of one in the same, or?
The reason you're used to seeing now activity envelope and building envelope is we have site plan review. And this has not been through site plan review yet.
Okay.
So this was back in the day when we just did building envelopes. And then through site plan review, they'll have to locate the septic system, the driveway, the house, well, all of those things will have to be depicted on a site plan. And then we'll have, we could have several envelopes. We could have the building envelope, a landscape envelope, a septic envelope, et cetera.
Okay.
But all within the outlines of that one building envelope?
All within the overall.
And then the other question I have is, does this 30-foot setback from the edge of the bluff, is that depicted on this at all? I mean, I just drew a line in randomly, but.
It's not on the county, that's right. It's a private restriction. It's not a restriction that the county is enforcing, other than the wildfire restriction, which gets handled as a condition of the approval. But, yeah, there are drawings that exist between the neighbors that show that 30-foot line.
You know, because when I first read this at home without your explanations and more detail, I was concerned that adding the extra size to the building envelope might, you know, bring the house more forward and make it more visible. And you're saying that's the opposite. So I'm kind of wondering if it would make sense to also record that 30-foot restriction in our documents, so that if future neighbors remove that, if there was a, you know, if there's a change in ownership and it starts to creep more forward, because it is a very prominent kind of bluff area for those driving up Castle Creek. And, you know, it looks like a lot of discretion and thought has gone into the application. But if there's already kind of a side agreement, why not incorporate it into this approval as well?
I don't have any problem amending that to show that there's a 30-foot setback. I have none at all. And there's also a 50-foot setback from the Hayden end to keep the house from being built in the last 50 feet. So just for view planes, to help the Hall. So both of those are under, you know, under contract. I have no problem noting them.
Okay.
They're actually recorded, private, they're private restrictions, but they're recorded in the county records, so.
Yeah.
But they could be lifted again by private agreement if there's a redevelopment, you know. So I think it'd be valuable to go ahead and include those in here. Thank you.
Happy to do it.
Great. Other questions, Steve?
I would like to commend you on persevering for so long to jump through all the hoops. And I commend you on having conveyed the 22 acres to the Music Associates.
Thank you for recognizing that. I appreciate that.
That means a lot to me. I've been involved in long land use things with our own family, and I'm glad that you were able to work it out with the Halls to get the access through there, because that's what made the whole thing possible with the Music Associates. I don't have any problem with the changes in the building envelope area, because they're reasonable. And realize that, number one, a lot of people want to build things right up so they get the best view. They want to put it right up to the edge, which also means that everybody else has the best view of their house. And setting your house farther back against the hill is, you know, even a few feet can make a big difference on how visible the house is from the road going up. But also that would make it much more defensible in case of fire, because the fire coming up the hill is the most dangerous to the house there. Setting it back away from the edge makes it more defensible.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't have any questions for you, but just.
Appreciate the comment. I really do, because it was a large donation for us to make to the music school. It seemed to work for everybody. Everybody was pretty happy with it, so.
Lance, I got a question. You went through this, but just to clarify in my mind, under the background, because this is still under takings remediation, and so the approval conditions were given three years. And so now, again, those expired in 2006. In 2008, they were extended. So it's the approval for the reliance on these conditions, and how is that different than vesting rights? That's my question.
I'll let John Ely respond to that.
It's a bit of a nuance. The state statutory scheme regarding vested rights allows local jurisdictions to define when vested rights attach to a development approval, within some parameters. And one of those things that we are allowed to do is to decide if a vested right would associate with a takings determination or not. And the land use code sets up the reality that we do not recognize a vested right associated with a takings determination. It becomes immediately subject to any changes in regulations and so forth. And as a combination, the board will, from time to time, recognize, the way it was done here, that the remediation, not the development approval so much, but this remediation of a taking, which, all intents and purposes, is a very similar event, that the property owner or successor can rely upon language within the remediation for a period of three years. It essentially gets you to the same position, but there are openings, such that if something is discovered on the property, we can recognize that and change the approval. And that reflects the reality, because typically, if you get to a takings remediation, you've, the property has been identified with some particular hazard or concern that has been addressed one way or the other in the course of the remediation. But, you know, if the hillside moves, or if something changes, we can recognize that and step in to alter or amend the remediation.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, if someone wants to make a motion? Rachel?
Yeah. Don't know if the, just off the agenda is enough, or we need the memo here. I would move to approve the John C. Bishop family trust amendment to a development permit with the addition of the language to note the separate agreements on setbacks from the edge of the bluff and the Hayden side.
And to re-add the square footage in the TDR thing?
And to add the reiteration of the existing size, house size requirements and TDR requirements.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate your vote.
Board want to take a short break?
Take care.
Yeah, the next one's going to be a little longer.
So, 10, 15 minutes, what do we need, please? 15 minutes? 15 minutes? Well, we can be at a quarter or two.
Thank you.
Okay. We're all right. Okay. Our last land use action item today is a land use code amendments, which includes special events, definition of grocery store, the Meadowwood subdivision, non-conforming use without significant changes, hearing officer, appeal, and special review for TDR. This is the second reading. Mike Kramer will present from ComDeb.
Okay, thank you. This is second reading of our code amendments, as the chairman's explained. We met, actually, for the first time at a public hearing on January 9th, the last BOCC meeting, to go over the proposed ordinance. And the board had some direction to staff to work on some language. And George, I was going to ask you, how do you want me to go through it? Do you want me to do as I did last time and go through the entirety of the ordinance? Or should I just go through the changes that we talked about? Or how would you like me to do it?
Any particular board pleasure?
Can we go through another sign?
Go through one at a time.
One at a time? Okay, then I think it'd be good to go through the ordinance then, if that's, okay. So if we go to attachment A, that's just the proposed staff ordinance, with some iterations from, iterations from the last ordinance, we'll start on page 3 of 12, that's exhibit A. And this code amendment was to create an appeal process for a hearing officer decision for transferable development rights. And it's a really simple code change. As of today, the code stands that there's a review by staff and a decision by the hearing officer, or a special review request for TDRs. And it's kind of odd, we just don't have an appeal process for it.
I'm sorry, I'm lost here. Where are we on this?
Oh, exhibit A.
I'm on exhibit A, but I don't see the information regarding.
Page 3 of 12.
Page 3 of 12.
I'm sorry, page 4 of 12.
4 of 12.
Is our chart in our land use code. And this chart dictates processes.
Oh, I got it, I got it, thank you.
This chart, it shows all the processes for land use review. And for the use of a TDR, this is actually a hearing officer decision. It's a review by staff. And for some reason, there's no appeal to the Board of County Commissioners, and that needs to be in there. So what staff has done is included an A for appeal under BOCC, and it's a really small A, and it's a really small chart, but it's in there. It's page 4 of 12, and that will create an appeal process for an applicant to appeal a decision by the hearing officer.
Rachel?
Does it also create an appeal process for neighbors who may have disagreed with the, so it's both the applicant and affected? Thank you.
So do we want to, do we need to approve these? Should we sort of get at least a nod of heads as we go along each one, and then we do a final approval with a vote?
Would it be okay for them to?
That's good, on this one.
Okay, good with this one?
So, yeah. So are we agreeing with you, or are we agreeing with this?
Agreeing with you and this.
Hopefully both.
Okay, perfect. The next one will actually be a link between a couple pages here, so I'll explain it. Of the ordinance, page 7 of 12, number six is actually a direction of the Board of County Commissioners. As you remember, we met in the spring of last year, and we talked about special events, and there was a number of topics discussed. And at the end of the meeting, there were some action items for ComDeb staff to accomplish. One of these action items was to create a less onerous, essentially a deregulation of some smaller special events within the county. And those smaller special events, what we identified and defined here are low-impact photo and movie film productions. And what staff did was we convened the special events committee, and actually Commissioner Child was there too, representing the Snowmass Capital Caucus. We discussed small photo and film shoots that occur in the county, and we talked about how we can basically create a less onerous process and not have them go through the formal special event permitting application. And essentially, they can email staff with the standards outlined here in number six, and staff can respond with an email saying to go ahead with that, with that photo shoot or that movie film production, subject to these standards that they would have to meet. And at the last meeting, we talked at length about trying to create basically a floor exemption for commercial photo shoots or other types of photo shoots that are so non-impactful that they should not even be under this exemption. In fact, they should not even be listed as a special event or temporary commercial use. And the idea was tossed out about a photo shoot for a restaurant. Rob, you gave the example. We also had the idea if someone was taking a picture of their pickup truck to sell in the classified ads, that's obviously not something commercial either. Also came to staff's mind was that if there is somebody just cruising up Aspen Mountain, and they want to take a couple pictures and then sell them as a one-man show, or one-person show, that that is also very non-impactful. So what we did was we redefined what a temporary commercial use and special event is. And I'm going to have you flip to a different page now. Page 12 of 12 is going to change Chapter 11, our definitions in our land use code. And it's kind of weird how the code is set up. We actually have a definition for temporary commercial uses, and then we have a definition for temporary commercial use and special events. And it's almost, it is the exact same language, and it overlaps. And it's almost, it is the exact same language, and it overlaps. So what we thought was that we would eliminate the actual temporary commercial use language, and it's all captured within this next definition here. And the next definition includes some underlying language, which staff just took a stab at, and certainly needs direction from the board, which should be changed, to exempt a really small photo shoot for a private sale. So essentially, someone who's doing a real estate ad, someone who's doing a classified ad, someone who's doing, you know, an ad for a local business in town. And I'll just read it if it helps too. A temporary, and this is the definition of this use here. Temporary commercial use and special event means a temporary, short-term uses of non-commercial lands or non-commercial structures for a commercial purpose or other temporary, short-term purposes not specifically allowed in the zone district. Temporary commercial uses include, but are not limited to, A, filming of movies, television shows, commercials, or promotional spots; B, advertising photo shoots; or, now this is the additional language, photo shoots for private sale utilizing more than one vehicle for more than one 24-hour period, and trade shows, et cetera, et cetera. So that underlying language, hopefully, was a first stab at trying to accomplish what Commissioner Edner was talking about, so that we defined a commercial use and special event as such. But in addition to that, if you're a photo shoot of, photo shoot for private sale with less than one vehicle, less than 24 hours, you're not under that definition and do not require a permit from us then. So that was our first, our first stab at the language.
We should hold off for a sec while we can absorb this. Any comments or questions? Rob?
So I think the first thing that I just want to be clear at, one, I think, for the, my interpretation of this from the, for the public and stuff, is that there's nothing in here that makes our laws more, our code more stringent. These are things that are making it less stringent. It's just the fact that they're, right now, any commercial activity requires a special event permit. They're maybe doing it within the county, but they're doing it in a non-conforming or
Unpermitted.
Unpermitted way. And this is allowing them to do lower levels of things with either a lesser permit, which is the first section, and the others without a permit at all.
That's exactly.
Interpretation correct?
Picked a nail in the head, and if, for lack of a better word, this is essentially a deregulation, if you will, of how we do business today.
Any other questions, clarification? Anything on that?
Rachel?
George, I was just going to ask a question of you, really. We obviously have members of the public here who are involved in these industries, and I'm sure this one, and then also the helicopter slash drone are of interest, and I am hoping that, I don't know what's the appropriate time to have some input from, from the community.
Yeah, this is not a public hearing today, but I will allow some very, very brief comments. But in terms of timing, I just want to make sure, we'll sort of deal with this as sort of a land use item. We'll work with staff first, and then make sure we have all our comments and questions answered for this particular item, and then I'll take a few very brief comments. So are there any other questions on this particular one for Mike, Rachel?
Well, again, it's not a question as much as a comment, but I also had wanted to make sure we are clear that this is about simplifying what is existing in the code today, whether or not people are following that or have realized the code may apply to them. But commercial photo shoots or filming and these sort of things in people's neighborhoods traditionally have been, especially when it's a longer activity, referred to the area caucus for caucus feedback and input, and then issues such as permitting for whether or not they're going to have cars on the side of the road, or not on the road, and things like that. And we were told by the industry during our work sessions that this is burdensome, and that particularly television commercials come up and go within a week, that people want the space, they want to do it, the fall colors are perfect, and that our process, which could have taken, you know, six weeks to two months to be able to get to a caucus, if there's a caucus in that area, to see if there are neighborhood concerns, were slowing them down and inhibiting the process. So we instructed our staff to see if we could find a way to, you know, not quite pre-permit, but create a much simpler process with a faster turnaround and expedite the permits. And this is that.
Thanks, Rachel. Yeah, and again, as Rob and Rachel and Mike has said, we're not adding regulations, we're actually deregulating some of our land use code. So just so everyone should be really clear on that.
Rob, part of it came out because of your concerns that everybody would be captured, everybody who has a camera would be captured, some sort of permitting process. Does this meet with your satisfaction?
Well, I'd definitely like to hear from some of the people in the public. I think, as I stated before, that this is, you know, in my mind, and Mike verified it, a deregulation of existing regulations. I'm not sure that it goes far enough in deregulating. One vehicle, to me, seems hard if you're going to a private home, and you have a photographer, and, you know, I'll use my restaurant as an example again. I hire a photographer to go do a private shoot in a private home, and the photographer comes up with his car, and I come up in my car, well, then we're in violation of this. So I'm not sure that this is going far enough. I do recognize that it is a deregulation of our existing code. And my recommendation would be to start with this, you know, or, or maybe switch it to two cars. And, and then somehow get some of the industry people together, who I think all want to be in compliance with our code, and have some sort of meeting of the minds to make sure that it goes far enough for their needs as well.
So two cars may be a little more reasonable, but still would not have an adverse impact, I don't think, on a neighborhood or
Correct.
All right, thank you. Steve?
There have been two occasions where we have had filmings done on our ranch. One was a commercial that took one day to complete the whole thing. Didn't comply with these regulations at all. I'm sure we were out of compliance. There were probably 20 vehicles. There were cars parked on the county road.
Don't you want to take the fifth, Steve?
You never know, the production company may have gotten a permit.
It was fascinating to me. It was one of my days in Hollywood. And actually, it was a shoot that they had a permit to do up by Maroon, on Maroon Creek, and the location didn't work out for them. They were scrambling to find a suitable Aspen Grove, and came to us on a very short term. While they had the whole crew there, they went ahead and did it without notifying my caucus or anything at the time. The second was the, the movie The Frozen, which was filmed last winter on our ranch and in Redstone. And I have no idea whether they followed any of the regulations either.
They did. They received a permit.
Getting the permits, I presume that they did. I didn't have anything to do with that one. But the long-term impact on our ranch was zero. There's nothing left, it was, you know, just totally a temporary thing. Short-term impact, for sure, there's some cars and people around, and, you know, tracks in the field and things like that, but nothing long-term. So that's my experience with, with the small, small kind of commercial operations for doing a film shoot. I agree with Rob that I think we need to look at it further, based on the level of interest of people contacting us on, in terms, you know, people involved in the film industry and the advertising industry have concerns about the regulation, and they have some really valid points and some good ideas that I think could improve the regulations beyond where they are now. And I don't recall that there were any, at the meeting out at the fire station, it was all law enforcement people, and myself and you were there, Mike, but I don't believe there was anybody there representing the industry, the film industry at that meeting. I think some, kind of a summit of getting you together with people from the industry and look at maybe changing the wording or, you know, taking their ideas into account would, would be appropriate at this time.
And if I could just add in too, that's true, at the meeting, we didn't have anyone from the industry there. They were invited. And I actually did work with, and I can just say it because they know, Aspen Productions, Jerry Long and Liz Long, they do a lot of business in the county, and they have, receive a lot of permits from us. And we actually, I personally vetted this with them, to go over what they thought was an appropriate set of exemption, for lack of a better word, standards to do this. But that's a great idea to get, to get more people involved, too.
Rachel?
No, I don't.
Michael?
Well, in response to Steve, we had numerous, we had numerous hearings on this, with numerous attendees, all in the industry, who, who are concerned about permitting. But from, at least from my point, so we've done a lot of outreach to you. So, but from my point of view is that you simply, whether or not you experienced disruptions, there are, there's the possibility of disruption from production companies, and from people who, having, having made this community, a community of neighborhoods and caucuses, people who come to exploit that and leave the, leave the scene of the crime, essentially, with the impacts unanswered, undealt with. And so I think this is a fair look at that, to make sure that both the neighborhoods, caucus areas, aren't impacted unfairly, or at least aware of the impacts before they happen, and also to give the production companies some guidance in exactly what is their expectations of them are. And so this is why we're here, this is what we're doing.
Rachel?
Yeah, I was going to agree, I think, with both Michael and Steve, in that when you get in rural areas and you have a large piece of property, it's perhaps far less likely to impact neighbors. When you get into mountain valley, and the roads are very tight and windy, and there have been examples there where the neighbors will complain to say, there are 15 cars parked on the sides of the streets here, and they didn't clean up, and there's trash on the spillway afterwards, and our snowplows haven't been able to get through, and was this permitted? And it wasn't. And there was no, you know, guidance about the traffic concerns or the safety concerns. So, you know, people were like, a fire truck could not get through here, they're double parked on both sides of the road. So it's not as if I want to be in an over-regulation business either, but there are real concerns that happen. And then I would also agree with Steve that, you know, we can always look for and find ways to improve the code. And if additional outreach is required, or input or ideas, we can continue to do that. These codes did go through our planning and zoning as well, so there were public hearings and discussions about them there. And, you know, we'll just kind of keep trying to make it better, but it's that balancing act of not having unintended consequences to people who feel like they're living, you know, particularly in a residential neighborhood, or when they're, you know, or, or make it unduly burdensome on the industry. And, you know, the current codes are pretty rough, and that may be why some people move forward without permitting in the first place. But I think that, again, when you get out of a commercial area, and it's no longer a commercial property, and it's a residential area, neighbors do kind of have a right to know that you're, you know, starting to create or allow commercial activities.
So any other questions for Mike on this topic at this point? We can come back. So what I'll do, if anyone from the public is here to just address this particular item, again, this is not a public hearing, so don't use the power. I will cut you off if necessary. So brief comments, thank you. And just identify yourself. Young lady?
Yeah, I'm here by accident.
You're in the wrong place, you mean?
No, but it actually turned out to be a really good thing.
You want to identify yourself, please?
Shelley Roy. And because I'm in real estate, and I'm very close friends with David Marlowe, I've been on numerous photo shoots. And if your intention is to kind of make this code easy, we've never gotten a permit, because what happens is, you go in, you, one, don't have much notice. The owner will call, or the broker will call the day before and say, we're going to have a sunny day tomorrow, and we need to catch the light at such time. You come in, and so first of all, the one thing you're going to have to look at is this seven to seven. I would suggest you change that language to two hours after sunset, because some of the prime photographs in town are done right at the time of sunset, and particularly since you're including, you know, take-down time, you're going to need about two hours. The second thing is, unless you've been getting a lot of complaints from people having a photographer come into a single-family home and take photographs, I would completely delete paragraph B under temporary commercial events. It's the exhibit G page. Because that language actually is going to catch people that I don't think you're trying to catch. And in fact, that language describes almost completely what most is being done here, without any of those people thinking they need a permit. Never crossed my mind that when I hired David to take a picture of a house, I needed to have a permit. And why this language doesn't work, Rob, you hit it, not only will the photographer come with the, the vehicle, depending on the size of the house, that vehicle is often completely filled with lights and tackle and everything that they need to take these pictures. The photo assistant, and usually it's a singular, very rarely are there two, might come in their own car, for various reasons, that they can come and go if they need something, leaving the main vehicle there really as the vehicle of which they load and unload from. So to make it easy, I would delete your paragraph B, unless two years down the line, or six months down the line, you're getting a lot of complaints for this kind of activity, because that's what this paragraph describes. And the only other thing that's a caveat, though, it says two days. Two days seems really reasonable. Again, in that industry, because they're so tied to where the light is and what's changing, I've often seen them show up, think they're doing it, take two photographs, an unexpected storm comes in, and they disband for a couple days, they're back four or five days later to see if they can get it again. I've even been with friends who said, oh my God, the light's good, let's go see if we can get that picture. We all jump in the car and go and try to get it. So that's why, if you want to loosen, watch a little bit how tight you get on your language to define.
Thank you. Anybody else that is different information, not reiterating the same information that Shelley just gave?
Yeah, she knows more.
Greg Bushman, I just wanted to say that I appreciate what Rob said, Steve said, and listening to what everyone else said, I do understand and sympathize. All I can say at this point, there are several concerns we have with this. I have several letters here from many people in the community who are very concerned, but they're working at the X Games, they can't get here, or somewhere else, but they're very deeply concerned. Pittkin County has a reputation in the country for being perhaps the most restrictive place for production. Many productions have gone away. Those productions could have given us a lot of PR value, marketing value, that the city and the resort have limited budgets to pay for. Yet we're so restrictive that people will not consider coming here. I've had many, many clients go away. Additionally, I've had filmmakers, producers, people who've worked with Mike even, have said, I'm afraid to go speak with those people. Others said, I get out of the business because it was so restrictive, I feel as if I've been run out of town. That was a quote that I received from someone today. So what I'm going to ask, please, I implore you to do, is table this discussion for several months, or as long as it takes, to get the community of filmmakers and production people in here to discuss this and come up with something that works. Because really, the level of strictness is too much, and I appreciate the efforts to deregulate, and, boy, I applaud that. It's not going far enough, and it's not well enough informed yet. That's all I can tell you. Last bit on the, regarding helicopters.
We're not on there.
You're not there yet?
No.
Okay. Can I just tell you one, one sentence here? Not about helicopters so much, but what I want, I want to read what I wrote. It would be very helpful if staff would reach out, if direct staff could reach out to the production community beyond production community beyond the few they've spoken to. Explore what other communities are doing in this regard. See where the technology is going. Learn about the cultural and economic benefits of a vibrant, supported film and photo community as opposed to one that's inhibited and held at a disadvantage. And thank you, that's my comment.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Coniff. I'm here as one of the community members that helped to get the Isaacson School for New Media started at Colorado Mountain College. I'm speaking for myself, not for the college, I want to make that clear. We have, are trying with the Isaacson School as a linchpin to create what we're calling the Digital Valley. We're trying to, using Silicon Valley and places like that as a model, we're trying to make this an extremely friendly place for people to create businesses and to create jobs around digital skill sets, also known sometimes as the creative economy, including all of the things we've been discussing. What I haven't heard in this discussion, first of all, I want to thank you for trying to deregulate this. This is definitely a step in the right direction, so thank you. But that's, I haven't heard one comment about how this could impact the local economy. Not a single comment. I would, I can tell you, I'm in a similar business as everyone here for comment, and I didn't know about this permitting process. And we just did a shoot, and I don't think anybody got hurt. Nobody was, nobody complained. And final thing, I'd just say, I heard the word exploiting the community. This is not about exploiting the community. This is about helping the community. If you look at New York City as an example, or Toronto, or any mecca of film production, if you're from New York City and you see a film crew there, you're happy to see the film crew, because that's helping the economy, how many, you know, tons of jobs being created and ultimately helping the citizens of Pitts County. So I think it's important to consider this in the broader economic context, so that rather than just being, you know, slightly deregulated, I would actually throw it all out, start over and try to have as few as possible, as few as possible. Because you know what? For the most part, people are going to ignore this. People are going to ignore these regulations. They do today. And I have one other question. Is there an enforcement mechanism? Like what do you get, what happens if you don't get a permit? Is there an enforcement mechanism?
Thank you. We're not going to have a...
I'm sorry. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
My name is Iska Childs. I am, well, on two counts, this concerns me, one as a property owner and someone who rents their property, so that I'm taking photographs with one of these things and putting them up on the internet to try and rent that property. And under those new regulations, or ones of which I've been unaware up until this time, everybody who's on VRBO or HomeAway would have to pull permit in order for the photographs that they've taken in their own rental property to go up on the internet. Which, boy, have fun regulating that one and going into the old property managers and all the individual owners and getting that one sorted out. I think you're creating a real boondoggle for yourselves if that's the starting point that we're going on. Again, I want to reiterate what everybody has said, thank God that you're really looking at deregulating this. But I want to also say what everybody else has been saying, which is, take a look at what the standards in the industry are. Take a look at like municipalities, like counties. And although Michael has mentioned, you know, some big cities, which you may not feel are commensurate to ours, one that's really close to ours is Moab, they've got the oldest film commissioner in the world. Take a look at how they regulate film and also take a look at what sort of economic benefit comes to the city of Moab and to that part of Utah out of the film industry that they've got there. We are not, we're part of the community, guys. We are here to work with you. I would love to know, Rachel, what the complaints have been. I don't want to know from whom, I just want to know what, where, and when. We will do everything in our power to try and mitigate any sort of complaints that there have been and make it better, so that it doesn't happen next time around. But honest to God, for the most part, our clients, especially our repeat clients in this valley, are so good about making sure that they've made no impact at all. And all through the 90s, I mean, how many of you knew that we were doing 60 shoots a year in the 90s here? I bet you didn't, and I bet you never saw one. But all you saw was the money coming to you, trickling down. Honest to God. And that's up to, that's from people like Klaus Overmeyer Jr., who's one of the top cameramen in the world, who keeps bringing stuff back to his valley. And to Taylor Phillips, who's Liz Phillips' son, who tries to bring things back to this valley. I can keep on going forever on that. And I'll try and make this, you know, much briefer, but I want to speak to one thing which is in my area of expertise, which is not in any of these other people's, which is when you say, it has to be built to code if you're building something. That is not the way the entertainment industry works. We cannot build to code. We are putting up a temporary structure. If we have to build to what your building codes are, we cannot make it temporary, we cannot tear it down in the timeframe that we've got to tear it down, and we can't build it in the timeframe that we've got to build it. That's the whole point of it. It's a temporary structure, it's not a functional structure, it's a decorative structure. And there are already codes in place from the state, and I believe also from the city, as far as what is display regulations are for a temporary structure. And that's what we're talking about here. You can't regulate Styrofoam rocks for White Fang 2 to be up to building code. It just doesn't work that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing that I'm going to close a public hearing, be as it was. Bring it back to the board, I did hear some good suggestions, I think there was some misinformation out there. It's always interesting, whenever we attempt to change our code to improve it, how much it raises the awareness of what the codes really are, and that's sort of a positive thing. That always comes from this, and we've had some great examples in the past. The most recent I could think of is the work we did on our ag with the ag committee, which was very, very successful. It took some time, staff time and volunteer time, committee time, but it ended up with a very, I think, very good product in terms of improving the code to enhance and encourage the continued use of ag property. So I use that sort of as an example anyway, as a model or a possibility if we want to pursue this further with a committee. As Michael has said, this has gone through PNC, there have been numerous meetings, we've had public meetings on this, and as usual, whenever something comes to the final reading, people seem to come out of the woodworks, but that's fine. It's always an opportunity to hear from the public. Rachel?
Yeah, you know, just briefly in response, I think that it's important to note that as, and I agree, I think the language sounds fairly arcane, but this code amendment would make it so there is no question about taking private photos, you know, at a home for getting on the real estate market. That was one of the things we brought up at the last meeting, of going inside places, outside places, whatever. And we were, it may obscure it more than it enhances it, but that section is supposed, and maybe it needs to be broken out, not try to include it in one long paragraph or one long kind of run-on sentence there, to say what is excluded from needing a permit, and just be more directly about saying what's excluded, rather than this doesn't apply if it's less than one car and this and, you know. But that's one thought. But this is trying to do that. And then the second is, you know, sadly, you know, we had a death from an unpermitted photo shoot on the back of Aspen Mountain just a couple years ago. And you'd like to think that sort of thing doesn't happen, but it does. And whether the permitting process would have helped improve that or not, it's hard to say, but there could have been additional requirements for what type of safety personnel would be available. And, you know, we do have complaints from time to time. And, you know, it does happen, that some people are disrespectful, and I do appreciate your comments and those of others, that the industry tries to police itself and, well, wants to make sure everyone's a good actor, a good character in how that they don't impact neighborhoods. So that's all. And I, as I said earlier, I support the idea of continuing to try to improve and simplify these activities.
Other comments, Rob?
Yeah, and just to voice some of my response to some of the things that were heard, in slight reiteration to Rachel, the code that we're proposing, first of all, is going to help the VRBO thing, because right now, that's illegal. With this, you can take a photo with your iPhone and put it, sell it for whatever you want, because it's one person, less than 24 hours. So right now, that's illegal, with the new code amendment that becomes legal to do on your own.
But, Rob...
Illegal is not quite right.
Illegal is not really the term.
Well, I'm sorry.
You're not going to face jail sentence.
It's against, it's in violation of our code.
It requires a permit.
It requires a permit. It's in violation of our code. Tabling this to later, I think is, was another comment that Greg brought up. This is a step in the right direction. Do I think it goes as far as we want it to go? No. I do think it needs more work, and I do think we need more input from the thing. I'm not sure tabling it to later solves anything, because the things that are still in violation of our code are in violation of our code. Taking out the photo shoot aspect, the problem with that is, is that there's got to be a limit of some level. There are photo shoots that happen that are very large. Victoria's Secret comes in here, you know, and does big photo shoots. So what's the limit there? And I think there needs to be more conversation, but again, the language of two vehicles, 24 hours, as an exemption to the code that we have, is a step in the right direction. Maybe it should be more than that, and I think that's open for discussion. And I do think this is all about the local economy. I heard it from a lot of people, and I want to make clear that that's definitely on my mind, that making code aspects challenging for our economy as a tourist economy, as one of the most beautiful places on earth, and the film and photography industry that come in here, whether they're dining at restaurants, staying in hotels, shopping in stores, all those things is a big piece of our economy and very valuable to us. I do think that there needs to be more discussion going forward, but I do think that there's nothing that's been presented to us today that is making anything any worse in our code.
Michael?
Yeah, to follow up on Rob, I think that what's interesting here is that one of the reasons people come here and want to shoot here, because of the way, the nature of this community. And the nature of this community, to a large degree, is based on our code, on our restrictive growth management and our rural character, and the preservation of all those aspects. And I suppose people could go to Garfield County and do their shoots there unregulated, but who wants a backdrop of oil rig? I mean, it's, that is that very code that we're struggling with that has made this an attractive community to film in the first place. And the preservation of this, of the natural aspect of this community, the environment, is based on our codes. And you can see in other communities where they don't have restrictive codes, people aren't that interested in shooting Victoria's Secrets. When are those shoots, do you know?
They're on the Wexner properties.
So all 5,000 acre, right? So this is a struggle, I get that, but I don't see that it's damaging to our economy. In fact, I see that a rationally regulated economy typically has the best economy. And there is nothing wrong with our economy because of code regulation. There's just, nobody can point it out to me, the code regulation damaged our economy. And I would posit that, in fact, it's enhanced our community. And it's the reason people want to come here, and they want to film, and they want to participate in the lifestyle and way of life that we have built ourselves here. And that's what I mean by exploitation. Having built this community, to have somebody come in for three days and disrupt a neighborhood or disrupt a rural area and then leave, that's exploitation. Pure and simple. Now, because it's convenient for them. Now, to prevent total exploitation, it seems to me we have to have some degree of regulation. And this attempt is to back off, actually, on regulation, and I'm quite comfortable with it. And there have been abuses, and they've led to unfortunate circumstances. So I'm comfortable with this. We're still struggling with it. It'll probably be improved, but I'm comfortable proceeding, frankly.
Steve, I'm sorry, do you have any comments before I make a comment?
I will eventually.
I don't think tabling it is the right direction, because if we table it, then we're going to be operating under the existing code, which I think we're trying to correct. So in my mind, the path for me would be to approve this, and with an amendment, and I like Rob's suggestion in terms of adding one additional car, that makes sense. And then, if there's an interest by the film and media community to commit themselves to work on a committee with staff, then I would welcome that, but knowing that there is going to be a time commitment. You know, when that ag committee came together, they were diligent, they worked tremendously hard, there was a lot of hours in it, but they ended up a very good end product. And that's what it requires. It doesn't require meaning that you come for 10, 15 minutes for one meeting and you're going to be able to resolve this issue. So if there's a commitment by those in the industry willing to form a committee and work with staff, then I would be supportive of this, because there's always ways to look at improving. But to table it at this point, or not to approve it, means that we're going to be, we're not to get any more comments.
I'm not commenting, I'm just waiting here to join a committee.
Very good. So that would be my suggestion.
George?
Yes?
And also, another example, it seems to me, is our recent struggle with accessible dwellings, which we had a volunteer citizen who spent over a year with our community development to come up with an improved building code. That kind of commitment led to our approving something that I think is a real advance in our code. So I think you're right. I don't think we should table it, I think we should go forward.
We need some advice from an attorney, perhaps?
I just want to make a couple of comments to the proposed language in advance of a motion. I think we went through the cycle, but I wasn't sure.
Well, we have one more topic before we get to a motion on the whole ordinance.
Well, for this language.
Okay. Hold on for that, I'll get back to John. Rachel?
Well, yeah, you know, I guess I want to say, this is a challenging section of code, because at some level, it mixes temporary commercial use, special event, and that may be a film set or shoot, or it may be a large fundraising party. And I, you know, I'd have to, Iska, just following up on your comment, I'm not sure that under temporary commercial use of special event, the existing code, number one, about temporary structure shall conform to adopted building codes, is that, does that translate to what could be a set for a photo shoot? Or is that trying to assure that if there's, you know, a tent put up for a special event fundraiser, that it's safe and not going to collapse on people in a windstorm? You know, and I, because you had cited that as being a potential problem in the code, again, it's part of the existing code, but it seems to me, other than that, we've now broken out number six as being specific to photo and film production, do the other provisions under one through, one through five, apply to the things under number six? And so that's what, you know, I'm kind of wondering if a part of a cleanup would be to separate out the types of special events, so that if it's a gathering, it's a dance, it's a fundraiser, it's a picnic, there's, it's very clear, this is over here, and, you know, photo, film, of a medium to large scale is over here, and then the exempted things are over there, so that, you know, it flows in a more readable way to, you know, the layperson or someone else who's trying to understand our codes. But that's... But that's, you know, that's just a question for staff because I, you know, I don't know if a temporary structure is a set. Is that different from if it's something that will be inhabited by people, a dance floor is not going to collapse, these kinds of things, and then what we mean by that?
And if I could on that. I mean, we have a building code which defines temporary structures, and they do have different criteria than a permanent structure. Inhabitation is always the key. The example that was given of styrofoam rocks, I mean, obviously, you can have styrofoam rocks in a film shoot. But if you have people in a tent, it has to meet certain building code requirements and fire code requirements for a tent structure, wind load, et cetera. And that's what that is meant, that there are applicable adopted building codes for temporary structures.
Okay.
And they need to meet those.
Thank you for that clarification.
Rob?
And I also want to just ask a question on the 7 to 7 that's listed in here, which is really in reference to our current noise regulations. So, it really has nothing to do with their ability to shoot after 7:00. They just have to be in compliance with noise regulations after 7:00. They could shoot at midnight if they want, as long as they're not making any noise.
Actually, well, that's not exactly true, yeah. Yeah, so I correctly identifies the current noise regulations in the county.
Oh, and then you've got the film.
Yeah, if you're loud, the sheriff's office will go out with a noise meter and take a reading. But what you're talking about, Rob, is G, where it says filming shall last for no more than two days from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and this includes setup and takedown. And that's what Shelley was talking about. That was where she asked us to extend that.
And I guess my question to the board would be, you know, if someone's shooting inside, what does it matter if they're shooting at 11 o'clock at night versus shooting, you know? I mean, I understand, but there are other things in our code that prohibit disturbances and those sorts of things. I'm not sure that that language is needed at all because of that.
Well, there's a point at which, you know, we have building hours, which you can build, and, you know, neighbors sometimes depend on wanting to sleep in the morning. And again, if we think about really rural areas, that's one thing. When you start thinking about more compact neighborhoods, and if people are going to start before 7:00 a.m., they're riding, you know, is that an impact to the neighborhood? Or is it, do we start to say anything goes? And same, you know, because this is within at least one of these sections I'm looking at, maybe not all of them, is, you know, five vehicles, 15 people, you know, if you're in a very small neighborhood where it's five homes to an acre, that's not nothing, you know? I think Shelley's idea was good to extend the hours after sunset, you know, but, you know, at what point would it make more sense for someone to just kind of be able to keep building to 11 o'clock at night? And, you know, they could get the job done faster, but that starts to impinge on the neighbors.
And actually, Rachel, that's exactly where we got those timeframes from, too, was the building.
They look familiar.
Okay.
But I can see the value of an evening shoot, too, so.
John Ely, you want to add some, look at some language?
Well, the first thing I wanted to mention is the language in page 7 of 12, which is the criteria under subparagraph 7 at the bottom of that page, as well as the language for the amendment to temporary commercial uses of special events on page 12 of 12, hasn't been reviewed by the P and Z yet. That was done in response to D O C C comments at the last meeting. So, that stuff will have to go back to the P and Z and then come back to the board. That doesn't mean the board can't adopt it at first reading now. It simply has to go through that step pursuant to the code. The other comment I wanted to mention is that in the new language on page 12 of 12, there's a breakdown within that paragraph of component parts of A, B, and then a Roman numeral 3. I think the Roman numeral 3 needs to be switched to a C because a reviewing body won't know what to make of that when you try to categorize things. Also, there is a distinction between A and B, between photo shoots and filming. To be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure what that means. I think the implication is a motion picture versus a still picture. But I think the definition probably needs to be expanded to make that clear to be able to enforce this. But on the other hand, perhaps, there really is no distinction between the two events because they are potentially both impactive or non-impactive and might be able to be addressed the same way with this limitation of no more than two vehicles, 24-hour period type of affair. So, I wanted the board to consider that, either figuring out a way to express this filming photo shoot idea, or perhaps joining the two together.
You know, as long as we're on that page 12 of 12, temporary, I still read this paragraph. It almost seems like a double negative to me that, you know, on the one hand, it's describing what is supposed to be exempt, but then it ends up saying temporary commercial uses/special events require the issuance of a temporary use permit. And so, you know, we're sitting there saying, this is exempt if it's only two cars, less than 24 hours, and this, but it just, that is a very confusing paragraph to me.
Yeah, it could have a definitive sentence instead of the way it's written. It could say, "The following will not..."
Require a permit.
And how much of your earlier point in terms of specifying what's actually excluded and separating that out?
Yeah, and it's easier in... So, John, are you...
Steve?
I'm trying to think of where to go from here, realizing that there was a lot of work put in by a lot of people to get to where we are at this point on temporary use permits and making them less restrictive, and yet, thinking that we need to go further and get a committee working on looking at maybe more major revisions of the whole filming industry and how we want, how to make it more accessible along lines of the Moab Film Fest, Film...
Commission.
Commission, something like that, I think would be very important to pursue that. And I suggest that maybe we should approve the changes that have been made. And I presume that there's no problem with coming back in short order and with more revisions to the same rules. Is that correct, John?
Keep doing it as...
We could change them every week if we wanted to.
Not quite that fast, but pretty regularly, if you want.
So, by approving what has already been done here, it would improve the situation, remove some of the restrictions, and then get a group of people working with the community development on looking at the big picture of, you know, maybe major revision or whatever proactive kind of things to try to make it more possible for film industry to work here without taking their business elsewhere because it's too onerous here.
Well, again, that was, my suggestion was to move this forward, and those who are in emergency to form a committee to continue to redefine it. Frankly, I'm not very interested in turning Aspen or Picken County into a Moab or whatever that county's name is. If you go down there, you'll see, as Mike says, you'll see a vast difference in terms of values and impacts. So, that's a whole nother discussion. But we could certainly work on this in terms of simplifying this aspect. So, that's what I would suggest we move forward on with a few of these little revisions, separating that paragraph out, 12 of 12, defining what's actually excluded, adding one additional car allowed to be excluded under those exclusions as a starting point.
And the two hours after sunset, is that better than 7 to 7:00 p.m.? Or do you have thought on that?
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, 7 to 7:00, you know, in the wintertime, it's, 2 hours after sunset is 7:00 p.m. Summertime, it's 9:00 p.m., so. Other thought, Rob?
Maybe some thought on direction with, this is actually second reading, not first reading.
Of some of the text.
Some of the text. So, do we move forward because this has to go to P and Z? Move forward with some of this ordinance, some of this land, is it an ordinance or... some of this ordinance and leave out the other stuff to go back to P and Z? What's the recommendation in terms of moving forward on everything, but as you said, some of it has to...
The board's poised to adopt at a second reading the language that it reviewed last time with those minor modifications, which is, I believe, everything but the two sections that I referred to, the criteria under the 7 of 12.
12 of 12.
Well, the whole...
7 of 12 is the helicopter aspect.
Right, that, the criteria there, and 12 of 12 in its entirety. So, that needs to be reviewed by P and Z before the board can adopt that with finality. Also, that aspect does significantly change what it is you're adopting. In fact, this 12 of 12, it changed the definitions, has never been reviewed before now. We talked about it generally, but there was never any language to be accepted. So, this, you can move forward on, but in the form of a first reading, and then it's referred to P and Z and we'll come back to you.
So, it just kind of continues as a first reading?
Those aspects.
Yeah, those aspects. Then the rest would be...
You can adopt that with finality.
We would adopt it with finality now. Thank you.
So, have we addressed the helicopter? We haven't.
We haven't, but I was assuming, maybe that's the wrong assumption, that was going to fall under the special events part of it, but...
That was part of the code amendment under the special events part. So, that's number 7, and we can talk about that one now.
Okay, so this, I was separating them in my mind. So, anything else on the photo aspect of it or the, what we've been discussing? You've captured those notes. We can, we'll see if we'll get a final approval whether we'll make those changes in that that's been discussed.
Well, I think, I mean, just for a further discussion, I think we need to, filming, I mean, who uses film anymore? So, we really have to define what that means, as John referred to it. Is filming a word for what? Who uses...
Moving pictures. We'll go back to the old...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because there, you're right, there are many times.
That's just a strange, antiquated way of looking at things. So, I think we need to figure out what the updated language is for reproduction of whatever it is. And the, in terms of after sunset, I'm fine with, you know, an hour after sunset language. That's fine with me. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but that makes some sense. And also, I think that, you know, the division between interior, where it's not going to impact people, and exterior. So, an interior shoot could go on all night long, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it meets noise and lighting regulations. So, that could be exempt. I don't know, but those are just some clarifications I think we need.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to helicopters. And I wanted to start this conversation, just ask John Ely a question, because in the past, where we haven't really defined the use of the helicopters in regard specifically for special events, now we're trying to come up with some standards, again, specifically for special events. And so, John, again, if you would just reiterate what you told us last time, why we would feel that we would need to do this, and then the other concern that we've heard from the community vis a vis some emails is that we're trying to take over the authority of the FAA in regards to these code suggestions for special events.
Well, the language concerning helicopters is on page 7 of 12, at the very bottom of that page. It relates to what is overall a numbered six, a low-impact photo/movie/film production. So, it doesn't relate to anything other than that. Anything outside of the low-impact photo/movie/film production, these criteria relating to helicopters would not apply. So, particularly, George, in reference to your comments, it does not interject the county into the business of the FAA or change the way pilots fly helicopters or fixed-wing aircrafts or any other type of aircraft. It only relates to the special use permit or temporary commercial use permit as related to a low-impact photo/movie/film production.
Actually, John, we were, that was seven in a row of all standards for temporary commercial uses. We weren't relating that directly to six.
To six, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's...
That's, okay.
Under temporary use, special events, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, helicopters is...
Then my comment is that the helicopter regulation applies only to temporary commercial use or special event permits as opposed to just general flying or aviation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mike, back to you.
Sure. So, as you're all aware, the board has had, since I've actually been with the county, a longstanding policy to not use helicopters for filming special events. And this would come in the form of like, you know, filming a ski event or a snowboard event. We commonly get the request to use helicopters for filming a car commercial, which is not allowed. And it's always been the policy, and staff has always expressed our policy to folks that we talk to. And what we're trying to do is actually codify that language, so we have it in the code as legislation. Staff proposed some language at first reading, the last board meeting, and the board directed staff to devise some criteria so that the board could actually approve a helicopter under some circumstances. And what staff did, we took a stab at some of the thoughts that were provided at the last hearing, and I can just read them for the record here. We thought, under 7 here, that we should include A, B, C, and D. A says that you can have a helicopter with the understanding that there is a clear and demonstrable marketing benefit to the community. B, the helicopter will be used for live broadcast. C, applicant will provide a factual representation, provided that there will be no detrimental impact to wildlife. And then, D, safety concerns shall be adequately addressed. And those are some of the ideas that the commissioners had at the last hearing, so we're open to listen to some other things, too. And I need to add one more thing, too, George. In my memo, I made a mistake. I included the discussion we talked about, which was drones, and these are these unmanned, you know, helicopters that go up and can film with a remote control on the ground. And we talked about them, and I actually forgot to put the word drones in the ordinance under page 7 of 12, here we're talking about. And in fact, I spoke with someone in the industry after the memo came out, and drones really aren't the appropriate term to be using. Really, it should be what, as I understand, the FAA calls it, an unmanned aerial vehicle, and the acronym is UVA. So, in number 7, we'll say helicopters and unmanned aerial vehicles shall not be used, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'll just include that if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, a couple of things. Number 7 is not clear to me, the lead-in language, as to whether the applicant needs to hit any of these criteria or they have to hit all of these criteria. And it just isn't clear, you know, because we were talking about assuring, going from a blanket policy that was unspoken or was spoken but uncodified, to a statement to finding criteria, and now it just, you know, you know, these are the considerations. To me, it's almost like a hearing of an appeal of a land use when we have a finding of one of three things, but you don't have to find all three things to be able to be granted. So, I think that needs to be clarified. The second is, the thing I don't think we fully have captured in here is the restocking of supplies that was like for the grand traverse race. And so, you know, factual representation shall be, provided to be... And so, you know, factual representation shall be provided to be, um, no detrimental impact to wildlife was kind of part of that, uh, because we were told it was better for wildlife than bringing in, you know, multiple snowmobiles trips to bring the same supplies in for the race. But, um, I, I, I think this one is more about whether or not you're, uh, buzzing elk herds to try to take pictures of elk herds, you know, and things like that, which obviously we don't want to see happen in the winter. So I think that the, the other, there is another criteria there which is, uh, related to, uh, it is determined as the most appropriate way to resupply, you know, folks in the back country. Or I'd imagine that if there was an event in the back country, this, you know, grand traverse race or something like that, and it was best for mountain rescue to save someone from their special event, that we would allow it on an emergency basis. You know, I mean, maybe that it's already covered somewhere else and it doesn't even have to come back to us. Um, you know, I'm sure that Flight for Life's an emergency pickup with mountain rescue, um, you know, they just have their own policies and procedures and, and our special event permits wouldn't rely to those. But so, but I, I don't, the one other area where it was used as an example that had been permitted before was coming from that grand traverse race. I don't think we covered that. And then lastly, for me, I think we really need to separate helicopters and these unmanned aerial vehicles into two different sections of the code to the extent they're going to be, rather than try to group them together. I think there's radical differences with them in terms of weight and, you know, potential downsides to them. You know, the helicopter thing is something that has come from a long time with our sheriff's office, uh, about the, uh, potential danger of those items. There was a pretty large helicopter crash at Paris just in the last week and, you know, it can have. Oh, was it London? Okay. And, and, you know, I, I, you read those fairly often, and especially with the sort of terrain we have here and, and conditions, um, I think that, that it really does deserve a very thoughtful and thorough consideration anytime it's for a commercial purpose or a special event. The unmanned aerial vehicles, I will say, I personally realize I don't have as much experience with them or understanding of them, and, you know, it's a relatively new technology. Uh, I know that in a lot of communities, law enforcement is beginning to use them. They're using them for wildfire spotting, they're using them for a lot of different activities. And it just, I, I appreciate Michael bringing them up as being something to consider, uh, but I do think that perhaps we need, or I feel at least I need a better working familiarity with them before starting to say what is the appropriate code.
Thank you. John?
Just a quick comment based on Rachel's observations. The way I would read this paragraph seven is, um, is that these A through D criteria are read in the, in the conjunctive, in other words, ands. I don't know if that would reflect your, the board's intent, but that's how I think it would be interpreted if it were to go to, uh, a different tribunal. Also, this refers to helicopters should not be used, the language says helicopters should not be used for filming, um, as opposed to say, resupply or safety rescue or anything else is. So I would, I would read this as the application of helicopters only to.
Totally separate from those.
Right, exactly.
Thank you for that clarification.
Questions or comments? Rob?
In light of what John just said, these being, all of these have to apply, I'm not so sure that live broadcast is in all ways has to apply, in, in my opinion. Meaning if they're, if there's commercial benefit and they're filming it to be broadcast later, this is saying that they, they don't apply, no matter what.
But could be used for broadcast as opposed to live broadcast? I mean, without the broadcast, what's the marketing value to the community? I mean, you know, 'cause I, I think, I could be wrong, but I think the board's intent was that this is not going to be suddenly for 60-second car commercials. You know, it's going to be, it was really centered around the bicycle race and watching the racers come over Independence Pass.
In real time.
In real time, to the extent possible.
That's what they're trying to do.
Yeah, I could say broadcast or rebroadcast and, and, you know, maybe you're right that it's going to be on a two-hour delay with ESPN because of the world markets and we don't want to, you know, make it have to be live broadcast, live or rebroadcast, if that's the appropriate term.
I'm just not sure that we got to a definitive answer.
Several emails that people sent with regards to, you know, filming from helicopters. And, uh, it's a similar situation to the, the filming stuff that, um, I think there are concerns out there that they feel like the wording could be better. One, one instance is safety concerns shall be adequately addressed. Um, and the emails mentioned that the FAA can, is really the one that has a whole set of rules concerning safety regulations for, for any aircraft. And they thought that the wording of that is vague and could be improved on a lot. I can't recall, that's the main, the main point that they made, was talking about that the FAA should be the one regulating the, the safety aspects of helicopter flight.
So we, we could just add safety concerns shall be adequately addressed per FAA guidelines, regulations, requirements, something like that?
Yeah, I think some wording like that would be in order.
There's, the safety concerns have mostly been expressed by our sheriff's department, and, and I'm sure they would not want to be left out of the loop to, uh, just the FAA. There may be some different things that our local sheriff's department looks at than the FAA does.
Okay.
You know, I, I want to make sure we're all clear, we're all talking about the same thing, because, um, I realize that some people will object and not support this, but we're not talking about opening up the doors for commercial shooting in general. It's just in conjunction with, you know, specific special events. And to that end, you know, we were depending upon the event organizers to coordinate, say, with the hospital and the airport here locally of what would they do if there was a Flight for Life during that time period? You know, how would they coordinate that? How would they understand that and in the airspace? So those were the types of things that, and, and I think we were talking about, which really have direct connection to the permit for the special event as opposed to broader FAA safety rules for vehicles or aerial vehicles, aircraft. So I, you know, I, I also would not want to necessarily add that.
I'm sorry, add what?
Well, he had.
Add FAA regulations.
I threw that out, so Rachel.
Into our regulations, you know, it's, it's not, you know, we're not going to begin having marketed helicopter tours of the Aspen area, homes of the rich and famous. You know, there, there's no application for those sort of permits available. But this was just making it clear that we could permit for special events such as the bike race.
Rob?
I'm just a little unclear, 'cause my thought process for letter D, safety concerns shall be adequately addressed, to me is kind of saying, well, FAA is not adequately addressing them. I mean, any flight that goes up by FAA into FAA space has to address the concerns of the FAA. So are we saying now that the FAA doesn't address safety concerns?
Are they going to approve our special event permits too?
No, no, but the point is, is that, you know, where are we to override FAA? And I don't, I don't know what the answer, where, what's the sheriff's concern that there should be more stringent regulations or guidelines than the FAA regarding safety for various things? And I'm not sure what that is.
Um, let me give, if this helps, I'll give an example of where, um, in our mind, and I'm speaking now for the sheriff's office, I remember vividly, we had about six or seven years ago an application for a, an international artist to construct these very large dice. And these dice were like, like you play craps dice. And the idea was that these, that these dice would be picked up via helicopter, and these things are massive, these are 10 by 10 by 10.
Dice.
Dice, yes, or art. And he was a performance artist and, um, the performance artist wanted to pick up, um, the dice at the Aspen Art Museum down by the river there. And with a helicopter, they would lift these dice up and then helicopter them over to the superpipe at Buttermilk, this was after X Games was done, and then pitch them down, um, down the Buttermilk, uh, superpipe in, in an effort for performance art. And, uh, our SO, our sheriff's office and the Aspen Police Department felt there was such a safety concern that this was not permissible. In fact, um, they would not allow the helicopter to come down and, and use that, use, and pick up these dice and do this. And there was a compromise finally found, they, they actually got a semi-truck and picked it up and brought them over there and they did it that way. But that was an instance where, um, the sheriff's office and the APD felt it was just, there was, there was too many safety concerns to adequately address the use. And, and that was an example that I can remember.
But FAA would have allowed it, is what you're telling me?
That's correct.
I don't know.
Essentially.
We don't know, we don't know if they asked the FAA.
Yeah.
And, and how long is their permitting process? You know, we, we might delay all of our things further by requiring someone to go to the FAA.
Well, but Rob's point is that the FAA, we're not going to overrule the FAA. Yeah, but we may have particular concerns. I think one of the concerns certainly of the organizers of the bike race was that the helicopter didn't go so low as to blow gravel into, into the.
Bike race.
Bike race people. That's not really covered by the FAA, but it is a safety concern. So if they're, they could still be meeting FAA regulations, but still mess up some people. So, so those are the kind of things that we're looking at. And we might not want to, just as a community, have the risk of low-flying aircraft, even permitted by the FAA, go over our residential sections that might be allowed. We might not want them to, um, go over forests and that are in danger of a conflagration in the coming drought years, even come close to that. So, so there's a lot of safety concerns that the FAA isn't going to regulate, but they're going to, they're going to be under the FAA aegis. But, but I think it's reasonable for us to have even further concerns, and that's all we're talking about.
I would agree with that. And Rob, back to your earlier point or question, and I, I didn't mean to skip over, but under B, uh, you had a question or comment regarding perhaps we should leave out the word live and live broadcast, and Rachel's suggestion was live and/or rebroadcast, does that work for you?
My thought would be that A takes consideration of B, whether it's of community benefit. And I think, you know, the board could make a stand at a point whether or not a commercial is of community benefit to the level that we want it to be. And I think this board, I don't know what this board's opinion on that would be, but the point is, is that A says, does it have a marketing benefit to the, you know, a demonstrable marketing benefit to the community? And B is not needed because the criteria for B would be whether or not it's got value to the community.
But, but that's a much broader definition if we, if you, if you leave out B. Uh, B just narrows it down slightly because we don't want helicopters on a constant basis. So, so you, you had better have, not only a compelling marketing benefit to the community, but you, you'd better have a live broadcast because that's the fundamental nature of what you're trying to do, like the bike race. In other words, the, the bike race, because it was a live competition, needed that, they, they made the point, they needed that helicopter there. Otherwise you would just have, it's, it's a marketing benefit to the community, you could have helicopters on a daily basis. And, and that's not something I'm interested in.
But I, I can only agree. I don't think we should be opening the door to hearing, and I mentioned this, our very first ruling, we don't want to lead anyone down a merry path of thinking that they should go through the application process and do everything else just to get our, our board at our discretion and saying, no, that's not a large enough, clear and marketable benefit. And, you know, I mean, we need to be real. I, I don't want to talk only about economic benefit. There's neighborhood impacts, you know, and I was willing to accept, and, and many were, the forest clearing on Smuggler Mountain with helicopter loads because it was less disruptive, or the clearing that the Forest Service, I think, or was it Colorado Parks and Wildlife did in the Woody Creek area, it was permitted. But it's very, very noisy and it's day after day of day after noise. And the noise in the winter can be particularly disruptive to wildlife and our elk concerns and habitat, and it echoes throughout the valley. It's, it's not, you know, contained in any way. So I really would like to leave that standard in there because we only were opening the door, and it was a considerable, um, push to do it in conjunction with the bike race.
So George, just so I'm clear, it sounds like Rachel wants to keep the language live broadcast.
Live or rebroadcast, but I, I, something about broadcast.
I guess I don't understand the language there because rebroadcast, a commercial is rebroadcast. It's rebroadcasting.
I think live and rebroadcast.
So it's like saying live or not live broadcasting?
No.
I don't know what rebroadcast means.
But what I meant is that if it is filmed for some reason and there's a delay and they're not going to put it on until two o'clock in the afternoon because there's a huge tennis match at one on ESPN.
What if they're showing it the next day? Then that doesn't apply? If they're showing it a week later, that doesn't apply? If, if the.
Okay, we could just say for broadcasts, you know, and, and, you know, a national broadcast or in, in broadcasting conjunction with a sporting event may be a way to clarify it. I, I appreciate your asking to clarify it, but again, I don't want to write it in such a way that it's interpreted by someone reading our code, oh, that's great, I can come in and, um, do a new, um, commercial shoot for a car going over Independence Pass, and that's going to be okay to track this car by helicopter.
I'm just saying that we need to have definitive language to stand behind it.
I think live broadcast is fairly definitive, I'm comfortable with that. That's what, that was what our approval was based for the bike race. And, and that's why we said, well, we don't normally do this, but the bike race is convinced that it's, that you need to have a live broadcast in order to, to have the best possible event. They, we went ahead and did it.
But then I feel that that means that if there's some glitch in their system, that they can't broadcast live, we're grounding that helicopter. We want to get the, we want to get the footage.
But you didn't like the rebroadcast language either.
We're not going to use it, but my whole point is, is that the language doesn't mean anything if you say for live broadcast or rebroadcast. It's like saying for, for positive or a negative, and it's good.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying live broadcast is good enough for me. I'm not mentioning rebroadcast.
But that's also saying that we're grounding a helicopter if they, the bike race says they can't broadcast live.
Well, they, they, they couldn't, uh, the first year they had, they had, uh, technical difficulties.
We should have grounded them.
No, you don't go out and drown.
Rob, their intent, their intent was always, and I believe them, was to have a live broadcast. Based on their intent to have a live broadcast, we permitted it. Whether they went through, uh, technical difficulties or whatever, that's, I'm not going to, I mean, this is, you have to show intent to have a live broadcast, whether or not you have it or not, I don't know.
And maybe that's the language we should have, the intent to have a live broadcast.
Steve?
I'm remembering Wide World of Sports, which a lot of that was not live, it was rebroadcast stuff, all condensed into Saturday afternoon. The event maybe took place on another day of the week, but they, they filmed it like did a documentary or whatever with the intention of rebroadcasting it on that time on Saturday afternoon. Somebody could also just be making a documentary of the bike race and not actually broadcasting it live. It, it could still have equal value for, you know, a marketing benefit for the community as a, you know, that sort of a thing instead of a live broadcast.
Perhaps language like the helicopter will be used for, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I was going to say is necessary for broadcast of a sporting event, whether it's live or rebroadcast or in a documentary. But the helicopter is necessary for film, for, to produce broad. But the helicopter is necessary for film, for, to produce broadcast materials for a sporting event. But the thing we're not linking it into there is for an athletic or sporting event. It's not in that language. Would that get closer to what you're saying by?
I just want language that has meaning, is the only thing to me. And the way for live broadcast or rebroadcast doesn't have any meaning in my opinion.
What, what would you suggest?
I, if, if our intention is, it's a different intention, but if our intention is for sporting events only, you know, then I think her language works. I think Michael's language works if the intention is for the intent of the applicant to be, I would say, live or close to live because everything's got a two-minute delay. The argument would be, well, why did you allow them with a two-minute delay? So, the question is, what's the intention of the board in terms of what we want to create here? Do we want to create an exemption for sporting events or do we want to create an exemption for something that is live? And the only difference between the two is to try to come up with an example of something that isn't a sporting event that we might want to broadcast live. If President Obama were going to jump off Maroon bells and we wanted to film it-
Sounds sporting to me.
It's not a sporting event. Doesn't qualify as a sporting event, but it might have significant commercial value to our community, but it's not a sporting event. And I'm just trying to brainstorm what the intent of the, the code amendment is moving forward and have language that has meaning.
Well, it seems to me that the intent of this language was that we were faced with making decisions on helicopter use. And in general, we're not in favor of it and have never been in favor of it and probably in general would never be in favor of it. So we were trying to narrow the scope of when we would actually approve. And using our past experience of the bike race, which was the first time we were really confronted with, yes, we will permit helicopter use in, in conjunction with this bike race. The experience of that is what's reflected in these words here. The experience was it was a live broadcast. It had demonstrable market value to the community. And there, and we were, we had the Forest Service here, we talked about wildlife, and I think we also had the CPW here and talking about wildlife. So, and then safety concerns, we also talked about that. So those all, that, all these come out of that experience with the bike race. And I think that's why they're here, because we've had experience with that. And I'm still comfortable with it as it exists right here. And as our experience dictates going forward, we might want to change it. But now I'm comfortable with this because it mirrors the approval that we made for the bike race.
Yeah, and I would agree. I'm comfortable with moving this forward and this, again, may be something that we can further refine down the road with the help of, of a committee as part of the overall filming committee. That's, this is one aspect of it.
And I think Rachel's idea of eliminating the UAV out of this is a good one. We'll do with that as a separate issue.
Yeah. I mean, if you strive for perfection, you're never going to get there.
I don't want to get too far in the weeds in this stuff and see how it plays out, but I appreciate you bringing it up. I, I sometimes have quarrels over individual words or not as well, you know.
We're really missing Jack on this one, aren't we?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on getting sort of a nod, at least a majority that we're comfortable with, with Al, this is worded at this point?
I'm, I'm okay with the language as it's worded. I would just have someone let Pro Challenge know that they cannot get approval within our code unless they are live. And I don't know what the definition of that is. So, they may come-
And ask for a code amendment.
And ask for a code amendment when we get to that point.
They may run out of time in terms of getting their permit in that case, but that's for them to decide. Okay, what's next, Mike?
Well, the meat and potatoes of our land use code is next with floor area and growth management and an explanation to the board of the Meadowwood code amendment that staff proposed to clarify. So, I can start that?
Please.
Okay.
You have illustrations, Mike? Can I even put those up?
I've got great ones right here, yeah. Color and everything too.
We might want to put the screen down.
I took it that way because it was broken anyway. I'm just saying, the magnet holder is, it's only got two magnets, so it's turning.
Okay.
So they all fall out. We, you see?
Okay, why don't you hit?
You can.
Color, yeah.
I, yeah, I even talked this up with some color before we came in. Okay. Okay, so what this section of the code amendments are, or is, is for the Meadowwood subdivision. And this is, this is truly a, basically a, a very minor in clarification code amendment in scope, but it entails some delving into zoning and growth management and then the specific resolution that was adopted by the board in 1999. So what we wanted to do was just quickly go over some zoning and what this means in terms of the code amendment. So the basic tenants of zoning in Picken County is we have, you know, rural areas and urban areas and they're defined by what's called our urban growth boundary. Our urban growth boundary is defined as basically our metro area, including the city of Aspen and some of the areas like Red Mountain, Meadowwood subdivision, a few places east of Aspen. And basically, that's our urban growth boundary. Meadowwood subdivision is zoned R-30. And it's a residential zone district with a 30,000 square foot lot size and it's within our urban growth boundary, our UGB. And what the R-30 zone district provides for is a floor area ratio of .13 or 13%. And what that means is you'll, you'll hear this term in the paper, you'll hear it from staff, it's, it's basically your FAR, your floor area ratio. And in the R-30 zone district, it's 13%. And what that means is that when you have a big lot, this box right here, you get a big above-grade floor area. So, the bigger lots you have, the larger above-grade house you can build in. On a smaller lot in the R-30 zone district, you get a smaller above-grade floor area. So it's a ratio and big lots get big above-grade floor area, small lots get small above-grade floor area, as dictated by R-30. Now, this is-
Could you simplify that?
Oh man, I'm trying. Now, the R-30 zone district for Meadowwood is within our urban growth boundary, our UGB. And specific in our land use code, we have some zoning exemptions for lots with FARS floor area ratios within the urban growth boundary. And those exemptions currently are today, 4,000 square feet for a subgrade or basement space and 750 square feet for a garage. So if one wanted to max build out, a scenario in the R-30, one would build up to their allowable floor area pursuant to their FAR, in this case, 13%, and then they would build a 4,000 square foot subgrade space and a 750 square foot garage. And that is, majority of phone calls we get is what someone can build out in zoning and this is the answer. This is, this is what you are regulated to in Picken County. So that's zoning in our 30. Now, I'm going to put this away because this does not apply anymore. We are going to talk about growth management, which is also depicted in this, in this blue box here. Growth management was instituted in 1978 and is chapter six of our land use code. And basically, this is my depiction of, of Picken County, the boundary written.
Very good.
Our, our current growth management exemption for the entirety of the county, for all of Picken County, is 5,750 square feet. And that was instituted in, in 2006 where we made 5,750 applicable to all of the county. We also, in 2006, when we wrote our land use code, we instituted a 15,000 square foot maximum, meaning that no matter what your floor area gives you, whether you're, you're on Red Mountain or somewhere else, you can have a max floor area of 15,000 square feet. So what this means is that someone can build floor area up to 5,750 square feet exempt from use of transferable development rights, TDRs, or growth management quota systems, our, our growth management, chapter six in our land use code. If anyone wants to go above 5,750, then TDRs are required or you have to get an allotment through GMQS, which is a biannual competition where we award floor area to basically good projects, projects that can, can meet threshold and score enough points in our point system to get floor area. We so rarely get applications for GMQS. Really, what the market does is they, they buy TDRs and they come through special review to land those TDRs up to 15,000. Now, there are two caucus areas within the code that don't have a 15,000 square foot max, and that's the Emma Caucus and Snowmass Capitol Caucus.
And the frying pan.
Oh, and the frying pan, correct.
They have smaller limits.
They have smaller limitations. Emma and Snowcap have an 8,250 floor area cap, meaning you can only land one TDR in those two caucus areas. And then in the frying pan, they have an overlay zone district that is a 4,000 square feet. So that's growth management. Now, we're going to, we're going to meld these two things together here. So we have zoning and we have floor, and, and growth management. And Meadowwood subdivision is very unique because they have a specific resolution that I attached in your packets. And that resolution says, and our land use code says, that their growth management exemption is their allowed floor area plus 2,528 square feet. And it's quirky and it's different and it's, and it's outlining the resolution and it's in two places in our land use code. And the implication of this is that when you are a big lot in Meadowwood subdivision, you can potentially have a big growth management exemption. And I use just this number, 7,500 square feet of growth management exemption because of this resolution right here, allowing that extra 2,528 square feet. Now, there are some instances in Meadowwood where there are some small lots and their small lots potentially can only dictate them having a growth management exemption of 4,750 square feet. And that is very quirky and very, well, I should say, not clear because the entirety of Picken County has a 5, has a 5,750 square feet growth management exemption. And what staff wanted to do was clarify the land use code in those two parts that says that 5,000 square feet, I'm sorry, 5,750 square feet is the growth management, growth management exemption for all of Meadowwood. And the way we've structured the code amendment is that these small lots that don't get 5,750 for growth management, not zoning, but growth management can have that 5,750. And that makes it equitable and clear and provides the same growth management exemption for all of Picken County.
Very good, Mike.
Very good.
I mean, it was-
That was very helpful versus the narrative.
I just have one question. When I was looking at the exhibit D on 9 of 12, it looks as if what you're allowing is the small lot in your example to go up to 5,750, but the big lot would be able to develop whichever is greater. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yep, and that greater would be-
That right there.
What, what they're allowed pursuant to that resolution.
Depending on the size of the lot.
Exactly. They're just throwing numbers out to get the board in.
The reason I was asking that is that particular resolution that is included at the end of the packet is a function of litigation that the county was involved in with the Meadowwood Homeowners Association a long time ago. I'm not sure when that was done. But at any rate, there was some ambiguity within the, the language on the PUD plat for Meadowwood. And the county took a strict interpretation. Meadowwood argued for a looser one. Meadowwood prevailed. And that resolution was a consequence of that, that litigation. So, we would, I think it'd be in a situation of a problem if we were rolling back the language in that resolution. But what you're doing here is really just expanding the language in that resolution, relaxing the, the limitation on some of the lots. That's how I'm reading this. Is that, is there a different intent?
I, I think that's correct, but the clarification is that we're not changing zoning. We're talking about growth management.
Right. That's right.
And also, some of you will remember when we adopted that 5,750 county-wide growth management exemption, that was controversial. Meadowwood was here and said, okay, if you make this change and treat us differently. And that's what we did and that is the result. And all we're doing is making it very clear that the small lots are going to get treated like the larger lots and they're also going to have a 5,750 exemption if they can't get to it with their floor area and the 2,200, 2,528 square feet. And we're just trying to be equitable and clear. Okay, good. Questions?
Well, I just, I'm assuming this, but you can reconfirm for me. They would still have to abide by any height limit, any side yard setbacks and things like that? So it doesn't give them any waiver to get to 5,750 if the, the box is too small? And then all of these will get the still remaining 4,000 square feet subgrade if they can accomplish it on, again, within the side yard setbacks and everything? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Has Meadowwood subdivision been included in this discussion at community development?
Yeah, it actually, and what we are trying to put in writing is how we have been administering this. Because it was, it's a clarification in our mind because it was the fair thing to do.
So they're aware of it?
They're. And I didn't email them about the code amendment.
And they are comfortable with it and it's something they'd like to see.
Yes. Hey, is that all right right now? We got one more thing to go?
Uh, we have, yeah, two more. Okay.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah. So this will be exhibit E of the board's ordinance, page 10 of 12. And I'm going to go back to another sheet here because this will also provide some clarification on, on what we're talking about. Chapter nine is our non-conforming section of the land use code. And it's, it talks about legal non-conforming structures within the county. And in the county, there are certain floor areas that have been exceeded and have been exceeded for a number of reasons because zoning changed, they were built in the 60s, and they just can't conform to it. And, and this is the purpose of this code amendment. And we talked about it at the last hearing and the board wanted clarification on what this actually means. So, chapter nine, like I stated, is our legal non-conforming section. We have two processes for legal non-conforming structures. And this is processes that were, that are in place so that one process can be administratively reviewed and one can be reviewed by the board of county commissioners. And the, the section that we're proposing to change is the section that deals with restoration without significant changes. And the purpose of this amendment is that we want to add the word "gross" into the language so that it effectively kicks it to a board of county commissioner review. And I'll explain what this means. When someone exceeds their floor area, and floor area is defined, and I'll, I'll go to my chart here so you can see, floor area is defined as your above-grade floor area. Okay? So this big lot gets a big above-grade floor area and a small lot gets a small above-grade floor area. That's your floor area. Gross floor area is when you add in these subgrade exemptions and these, and this, this garage exemption of 750 square feet. So, this is considered floor area and the addition of these two exemptions, we call that gross floor area. And the way the current code reads is that when someone wants to expand floor area, it ends up being a board review. And we've seen it before at, like La Chamonix where they want to expand floor area for the basements, we've, we've seen that. But that's, the way the code reads today is that when someone wants to expand gross floor area, it's actually not a board of county commissioner review, it's actually a staff-level review. And it was a nuance that came up in a couple of projects and staff felt that these really should be board of county commissioner reviews, that when someone's exceeding, increasing their, their gross floor area, this is no longer a restoration with, without significant changes. This is a restoration of significant change that becomes a board of county commissioner review. So with the addition of that word "gross," it kicks it to a BOCC review and it's no longer a staff-level review. And that's the proposed code change and the nexus behind it.
Questions?
But when it comes to us as a review, is there then board discretion about whether to allow the full- to allow the full rebuilding or how much?
Yeah, let me, I can, I'll read those standards. I'm sorry. Get those quickly. The standards with significant changes are, Board of County Commissioners finds that any adverse impacts of the non-conforming use or structure on the neighborhood or the county as a whole to be tolerable. The structure or use is consistent with the adopted master plans for the area. The applicant demonstrates that the purpose of the development is to meet practical difficulties and hardships that arise from the existing restrictions upon repair, alteration, or restoration, and that it will improve the function and appearance of the structure. Those are the criteria that the board would use to determine whether or not an expansion of an existing non-conforming structure is appropriate.
Okay. And let me just follow this one or two more steps. With the repairian setback code of 100 feet from the high watermark, there are now a lot of non-conforming structures to that code. And I realize there are some additional language within that section that allows someone to expand or not. But that expansion of those non-conforming uses would now, with this addition of the word gross floor area, definitely be kicked up to this board?
Yeah. Well, no, actually not, because that's a non-conformity by virtue of a setback. These are non-conformity, the code amendment we're proposing is by virtue of exceeding your allowable floor area, so two separate things.
Thank you for that. Thanks.
Anything else?
I'm okay with this. I appreciate the explanation.
Okay. Last one.
This is the last one. This is Exhibit F, and this is our grocery store definition. And this is unchanged from the last definition that staff proposed. And I know that Rachel had brought up some concerns about it, but when I was checking the nods from the board, it seemed like there was a majority that said this was okay. But if not, let us know, and we can alter it, too.
Why don't you just read it for the public?
Sure. So grocery store is not defined in our code, but we would define it as means a retail establishment that is primarily engaged in sales of packaged food and produce rather than food prepared for consumption on the premises or other goods.
Everyone live with that?
Live with that.
Live with that? Okay. Great. That was easy. The last one.
All right.
So I would interpret a motion.
Yeah, I need to ask Johnny Lee one question on this, because I heard your explanation to Rob before, but I still got a little bit lost. Do we pass this in its entirety as a motion, as amended, to the extent we amended it? And then it kind of goes on hold until P&amp;Z catches up on the two provisions that we have changed, and then it comes back to us for a third and final? Or do we need to kind of separate this out into two things, that one we're passing finally and the other we're kicking back as a separate motion?
You can go in either direction. If you would like to get something in place and adopt what you reviewed twice, you can certainly do that, and that would require you breaking it off. Basically, because you're adopting on a second reading those elements of the ordinance that you've already reviewed. The elements that you're seeing for the first time, you'd have to adopt on a first reading and send to the P&amp;Z for their review, and they'll come back to you. Or you can, or if you keep it all together, nothing will be into effect until it's all assembled in one package.
Going to get at the end. I just, I don't know which is the easier motion to try to make, I guess, is clearly.
Well, I guess the question, the question would be whether we want to pass those under second reading that have already gone through P&amp;Z, or we want to have P&amp;Z look at it and they have any feedback. That's the opportunity for them to come back to us at second reading.
I don't know if one is easier than the other, but it's up to the Board's preference as to whether you wanna get something adopted in right now, or if you wanna keep it all together and have it go in together.
Which ones would we adopt, could we adopt right now? That's my problem.
I would, staff would be hopeful that those that did not have language changes or concerns could move forward, because we're anxious to have them in the code.
And can staff-
And that would be the definition of the grocery store, the change to the restoration without significant changes, the Meadowwood subdivision item, and adding the appeal to the hearing officer's determinations on TDRs. Those all would be at second reading and approvable, and would not require going back to the P&amp;Z. We would prefer that we-
I would make a motion that had effect.
Second.
Discussion, Rob?
And just to be clear, so that's, looking at this ordinance, that's pulling out Chapter 4, Exhibit B, temporary commercial use special events, and Chapter 11, Exhibit G, temporary commercial use special events.
Correct.
And everything else would be included-
Correct.
-in this ordinance.
Further questions or discussion?
Is there a second?
There was a second.
I guess one more question. After this, we would be approving first reading for the other two? Okay.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Now we can go back to those-
I'll make a motion for the same ordinance for first reading for the Chapter 4, temporary commercial use special events, and the Chapter 11, Exhibit G, amendment to the definition of temporary commercial use special events.
And we had some addendums to that, some changes. I just wanted to make sure, I think I captured them all, but let me know. That would include clarifying that one paragraph in terms of what's actually excluded, adding an additional car to be excluded. Let's see, extending the hours for photo shoots to one hour after sunset. Michael added a last one we didn't really discuss. If it's interior, there's really no timeframe, as long as it still meets noise and lighting code. And an updated language for moving pictures filmed.
Yes. May I propose the language one hour after sunset or 7 o'clock, whichever is greater? Because I do believe that on the smallest day of the year, 7 o'clock is later.
Sure.
What is it, one hour your person said?
Or 7 o'clock PM, whichever is later.
Steve?
Do we wanna have wording for unmanned aerial vehicles added also?
For moves.
Helicopters and unmanned aerial vehicles.
It's not in it, the way it was presented to us.
We removed it for further consideration.
Yeah.
And I also had that Rachel wanted us to break out this so that we have a better understanding of the exempt commercial use and special event activity, too.
Doing, rather than doing a run-on sentence, make a definitive statement. Does that capture everything?
I think so.
That acceptable for your motion, Rob?
That's acceptable for my motion.
You know, I just-
I haven't got a second yet, but-
I'll second.
Second, okay, discussion, Rachel?
Thank you. I think that as we send this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we should have a little bit of a footnote, which can be conveyed by staff, but that, you know, we acknowledge that maybe this is as far as this work has gotten so far, and we would like to be able to update the codes, at least in a first step type of fashion. And that, you know, to the extent there are issues brought forward in the public hearing to P&amp;Z that they feel comfortable with, then that's their job to add or include them. But if it is seeming like something like the agricultural task force is gonna take three months, or four months, or five months, you know, it may be good to move it forward as improved at the time, and then still with the commitment to go forward with a larger task force to look at a greater simplification of it afterwards. But I don't, I don't want it to get either bogged down in their workload, which could take quite a while to process through, that basically legitimizes a certain number of activities right now. And so, you know, again, we're not shutting the door, but I don't know that we're tasking our P&amp;Z to become our task force to resolve all those issues.
Yeah, I think I understand. We want to try to limit them to these proposed code amendments and the language in them, and that they make a recommendation on that that would come back to you in a timely fashion.
And again, if there's simple or anything like this, it's not to close it down, but if it's something that is going to then send us all in a circular direction, and we don't even get any improvement for a lengthy period of time, that would not be our intent.
And then to add on to that, I think what I saw not ahead was that we would be receptive to forming a committee to further work and refine these codes. So again, so P&amp;Z does not have to get into that minutia. That would be our recommendation. And then also, P&amp;Z, will they have the opportunity at some form or fashion, print or media grassroots, to sort of view our discussion of this, so they understand some of the issues, and so they don't have to rehash?
I can let them know that it is available on their computers to watch this session.
Yeah. Maybe if we can get them a link to this portion of it, that'd be great.
It just seems like, it seems like that would actually speed up their discussion and process that they've had the opportunity, so they don't have to sort of go through this whole-
Depends.
Anyway. Okay, great. So we have a motion with those amendments. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, staff, for all your help on this. Okay. Open discussion. Do we have anything, John?
Just a quick item for you. We've been working on looking at space needs and such in the old courthouse. It's been, we've been, we've had a larger project looking at space needs-
We don't have a new courthouse.
Yeah.
In the courthouse.
In the old courthouse. And I just wanted to let you know that as we've been working with departments, we've particularly had a crunch in space with our APD, Aspen Police Department and Sheriff's Department. We've had discussions with the sheriff and our new DA coming in, and looking at the square footage for an employee there, there was a large difference. And we've reached an agreement to actually switch the office suites coming up, probably in this next few weeks. We still have to put the timeline together for it, but that the Sheriff's Department, so being the sheriff, under sheriff, operations manager, record specialist, and their admin staff would be moving up in the space that's currently occupied by the two and a half FTEs in the DA's office. And the DA's office, which is on the first floor, those positions would be moving down into that what's currently the sheriff's suite, and it allows us some more flexibility to give both the APD and Sheriff's Department operations more room. And so we've been working with everyone on this for some time and have developed a plan. We are still nailing down the exact timing of that move, and we'll be, of course, keeping you and the public informed, but wanted to let you know that it's a forthcoming move based on analysis that we've been doing with everyone there.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for open discussion today? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, grassroots. Let's take a few-minute break here.
While grassroots breaks down, we can-
I gotta go get a seat.
Okay.